Okay, the March 27, 2007, meeting of the City Council will come to order. Roll call, please.
The record will show that all members are present.
Does the City Attorney have any closed session report?
Nothing to report tonight.
Okay. We will now have our Pledge of Allegiance, and in lieu of the invocation, since we couldn't get someone from the clergy to give it tonight, I've taken the liberty of inviting gentlemen that I'm familiar with through my affiliation with Boy Scout Troop 90. His name is Frank Carpenter, and he will give us an inspirational poem, actually, this evening. So if you'll please remain standing for that as well. And Leslie, why don't you give us the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My invocation is actually a prayer, but it's in the form of a poem tonight. My invocation is a prayer in the form of a poem tonight, so join me in reverence. Dear God, we humbly thank you for this beautiful city where we have the privilege of living so near the shining sea. We thank you for these leaders who are the stewards of this place. Give them wisdom as they guide us, tempered with kindness and grace. We ask your blessing on this meeting and the business we must do. Let us conduct ourselves this night in a way which honors you. May your blessing also rest upon this fair city by the shore. Grant that it may thrive and prosper in our care and evermore. Amen.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, now we'll go into our presentations. The first is a proclamation for an ocean rescue conducted by lifeguard John Moore. Is John here? Please come to the podium. Okay, I'll read the proclamation, John.
Whereas on Monday, March 12, 2007, at approximately 9:30 a.m., lifeguard officer John Moore witnessed seven victims in the surf needing assistance at 48th Street. And whereas John Moore raced into the water to assist all seven of the victims, and whereas John Moore instructed the two strongest swimmers to the shore, and whereas John Moore reached four other swimmers who were panicked and pulling each other under, and whereas John Moore gave the four swimmers his boy so that he could go assist the final victim, and whereas John Moore calmed all of the panicking victims down, and whereas John then gathered all of the victims and swam them around the rock jetty to safety, and whereas once upon the shore, one of the victims collapsed from fatigue, and whereas John Moore carried her up to the beach to a fellow lifeguard and fire department paramedics, and whereas John Moore saved the lives of these seven swimmers, now therefore I, Stephen Rosansky, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, to hereby recognize the heroism and selfless courage against difficult odds demonstrated by lifeguard officer John Moore, along with the remaining personnel who responded to assist with the rescue of the seven victims, in the name of the City of Newport Beach and the Newport Beach Fire Department.
Thank you, John. A heroic feat.
Thank you.
Great. John, don't leave. You're gonna come down and present it, and I'm gonna ask Councilman Curry to join me. He's, I believe, a family friend of yours? I mean, Hen, I'm sorry, Hen, to join me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you like to say anything, John? Sure. Yeah. Thank you very much. It's humbling. I mean, we go out there every day as lifeguards to patrol the beach, and every once in a while, these opportunities come up. And at the end of the day, one of my senior guards told me, hey, these are the ones you remember when you retire, so I'm glad to have this, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Hopefully, you won't have too many more memories like that.
Mayor, may I just make one other comment?
Sure, go ahead, Mike.
John, before you leave, I just wanted to say that I personally am not surprised, and was not surprised, when I learned it was you that did this. We know you well. You are a shining example of the kind of person that we really need to have, working with our safety personnel, and on behalf of everyone, I appreciate it.
Okay, next, we have a presentation of a check from the Friends of the Newport Beach Library to the City of Newport Beach.
Good evening, Mayor Rosansky and City Council members. My name is Susan Warren, and I am the Library Services Manager. I'm here tonight to accept a gift on behalf of the Library Board of Trustees and the residents of the City of Newport Beach. This check is $17,000 from the Friends of the Library. The gift will provide databases for students, music on CD, and new books for the library and the residents. The Friends of the Library have donated, so far this fiscal year, over $175,000. And I would like to introduce you to Susan Hirsch tonight, who is on the Friends of the Library Board of Vice President, but more important than that, she's in the library every day, lifting and carrying books with her husband, and sorting to make the Friends of the Library bookstore and the book sale the wonderful success that it is for these donations for us and the city. And I thank you tonight, and one plug, the next library book sale is the May 4 weekend, and the Friends bookstore is open every day. Thank you.
Can't beat the bargains you find there at the bookstore.
That's true. He'll come down and accept it.
Mosquito Week. And with us tonight, we have someone from Orange County Vector Control District. I'm gonna butcher this, I think, but Tanya Pett?
Tanya.
Tanya, okay. That's an interesting way to spell it, yeah. Okay, Tanya, I have a proclamation here for you and your department. Whereas in the last two years, West Nile Virus has killed 24 people in California and sickened nearly 1,200 others, and whereas the State Department of Health Services and the Center for Disease Control predicts West Nile Virus will again pose a public health threat in California in 2007, and whereas adequately funded mosquito and vector control, disease surveillance, and public awareness programs are the best way to prevent outbreaks of West Nile Virus and other diseases borne by mosquitoes and other vectors, and whereas educational programs have been developed to include schools, civic groups, private industry, and government agencies in order to help the public understand how to protect themselves from West Nile Virus by staying indoors when mosquitoes are most active at dawn and dusk, wearing pants, long-sleeved shirts, repellents containing DEET, eliminating standing water that can support mosquito breeding, and alerting the local vector control district to significant mosquito infestations. That was a mouthful. Whereas the West Nile Virus and Mosquito Vector Control Awareness Week will increase the public's awareness of the threat of West Nile Virus and other diseases and the activities of the mosquito and vector research and control agencies and their professional staff working to minimize the health threat within California, and will highlight the educational programs currently available. And whereas the California State Legislature and the Mosquito and Vector Control Association of California have designated the week of April 23 through April 29, 2007, as West Nile Virus and Mosquito and Vector Control Awareness Week in the state of California, now therefore I, Stephen Rosansky, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, to hereby proclaim the week of April 23 to the 29, 2007, as West Nile Virus and Mosquito and Vector Control Awareness Week. Very good. That was a mouthful. Thank you. Here, I'll come down and present it.
Thank you.
Make sure you get rid of all your standing water, right?
That's right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you like to say a couple words?
Sure. On behalf of the Orange County Vector Control District, I would just like to thank the City of Newport Beach for all of their continued vigilance on dumping out their standing water, wearing repellents, wearing long sleeves and long pants, and this is a joint cooperation. We need your help just as much as you need ours, so please contact us if you have any questions, situations, and we're here to help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tanya. Okay, notice to the public?
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay, we'll start with Councilman Hen.
Nothing.
Councilman Curry?
Two things. First of all, I want to recognize, as was noted in the paper, the contributions of Congressman John Campbell and Ed Royce, along with Senator Feinstein, in helping to secure an additional $5 million for dredging the Upper Bay, which was announced this week, and their contributions to the city and to preserving our environment are very appreciated and very effective in today's tight money environment in Washington. Secondly, later tonight, we will consider legislation aimed at the group home issue and how we can address that issue legislatively through Sacramento in our community. One bill that's not on the agenda, AB 716, was introduced by our own Assemblyman Chuck DeVeau, co-sponsored by Mervyn Diemoli, which would provide for an additional 4,000 state beds for recovering alcoholics or people with drug issues for whom it is not appropriate to release into the community. Now, 4,000 beds is not enough statewide, but it is a start. I understand from the mayor that this bill will be considered by our committee, and I look forward to their recommendation on it in a future meeting.
Councilman Solitz?
Nothing.
Councilman Webb?
Nothing.
Councilman Daigle?
Yes, I was pleased to hear that, thanks to the leadership of Second District Supervisor John Morlock, that the County Board of Supervisors agreed today, in concept, to authorize the funding and completion of about $19 million in critical projects in Santa Ana Heights, which is in my district. These projects are long anticipated and will be great assets for our community and for the city as a whole. These projects are the Mesa-Birch Park, the Equestrian Arena, the utility undergrounding project on Cypress and Mesa, new playground equipment on Orchard Drive, which is west Santa Ana Heights, the reconstruction of Old Klein Drive, also in west Santa Ana Heights, and significant improvements, including landscaping along Irvine Avenue. Also importantly, the supervisor was successful in committing the board, at least in concept again, to another $5.5 million for our fire station project, a project that includes a community meeting room and a training tower. And finally, the conceptual agreement will close the RDA when these projects are complete and when debt obligations are addressed, allowing a large portion of the RDA's property tax to start coming back to the city. And we will begin work on that MOU next week to make all of this happen. And again, my thanks, and I speak for the entire City Council and city staff, to Supervisor Morlock and his staff, including his chief of staff. They worked very hard on this settlement, and I'd also like to recognize the supportive pack in this settlement. Their concurrence was very important to resolving these issues. And I'd also like to thank our city manager, Homer Bloudow, and our Assistant City Manager, Dave Kiff, for all of their hard work on this. So thank you, and great day for Newport Beach.
Anything, Nancy?
Yes, I just would like to invite people to go down to Big Corona, if you haven't seen it, since it's finished, its completion. The landscaping right now looks particularly great with all, I think it's called sea lettuce. Anyway, the purple flowers are all out, and you drive down, it looks great. We did a wonderful job with the plant palette there. Kudos to staff. And also, if you'll notice, as you go up MacArthur off Coast Highway, there is a new planting on the median there, which is trying to be ocean-friendly by using plants that require less water, and yet still are very attractive, a whole new palette, again, for our city. Congratulations to General Services.
Thank you. I have several quick announcements here. Number one, I think most of us attended the Police Appreciation Breakfast on March 21. It was put on by the Chamber of Commerce to recognize our police officers this year, and I thank them for doing a wonderful job, as usual. Number two, I want to thank Councilman Curry's wife, Pam Curry, for inviting me to the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast on March 22. There was at least a couple hundred people there, I believe, and it was a very nice event. Third, I'd like to announce that this Thursday at 6 o'clock in the Friends of the Library Room, we'll be having our second meeting of the Intense Residential Occupancy Committee. So all those of you who are interested in the issues that we'll be discussing, including the DeVeau bill that Councilman Curry mentioned, we will be taking that up at that time. And lastly, we have a communication here from OCTA, the Orange County Transportation Authority. It says that the OCTA is now recruiting Orange County community leaders for openings on the Volunteer Citizens Advisory Committee. The qualifications that they're looking for is, number one, community involvement, that you either currently represent a group with a large, active membership or constituency; two, that you have a demonstrated interest in community activities and transportation issues; and three, a willingness to dedicate a minimum of 20 hours per year to OCTA meetings and other activities. If you're interested, you can contact Karen Taylor at the Public Communications Department. Her phone number is 714-560-5347. Applications are due no later than April 12. Okay, with that, that concludes my remarks there. Move on to the Consent Calendar.
All matters listed under Consent Calendar, Items 1 through 13 and Supplemental Item 21, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The City Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Nancy, any items to pull?
None.
Councilman Daigle?
None.
Councilman Webb?
On Item 8, that's the Mariners Park improvements, this is the replacement of the baseball field that was removed for the construction of the library, and since the outfield is a little over 300 feet from my front door, I need to abstain on voting on that item.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Webb. Councilman Hen?
None.
Councilman Curry?
No items.
Mayor Protem Solitz?
None.
And I have none. Does the staff, any items?
No items tonight.
Okay, is there any items?
Actually, one thing. We do have a correction, as Councilman Hen pointed out this afternoon, on Item Number 7, Recommendation C. The total bid price should be $786,889.
So is it $2,000 or there?
$2,000 goes to Mr. Henry.
Thanks for saving us $2,000. We should really be saving the extra $150 there for that. Okay, does the public, yeah, please do. Does the public have any items that they would like to pull on the consent calendar? Seeing no one, we'll bring you back to council for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of the Consent Calendar Items 1 through 13 and S21, with Item Number 7 is corrected by staff.
And the abstention?
And the abstention to Councilmember Webb.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Motion carries.
Item 14, in lieu of park dedication fee adjustment, I believe that the staff would like to have this matter continued once again?
Yes, we would, Mr. Mayor. The BIA asked for a 30-day continuation before last council meeting, and that was something that got by staff, so in order to honor their request, they have requested some information. We are providing it, so we intend for it to be on the next meeting.
Okay. Do I have a motion for continuance?
So vote.
Second?
Second.
I'll open it up for public comment. Anybody in the public want to comment on our continuance of this item? Seeing no one, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is the Newport Beach Brewing Company Review of Use Permit Number 3485-2920 Newport Boulevard. Do we have a staff report on this?
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the city took up the review of this use permit last year due to complaints received from residents within the Canary Village area. Bit of background, the establishment started--
Is the mic on? Yeah.
Yes, it is. As indicated, the city started reviewing this use permit last year due to complaints received from area residents. The use permit for this was issued in 1993. It authorized a restaurant and brew pub. It had late hours of operation until 2:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday and 11:00 during the week. In 1999, the use permit was amended to allow them to sell distilled spirits. As is mentioned, in January 2003, we received some complaint letters alleging, you know, patron behavior in the neighborhood, causing disturbances, and a variety of violations of the use permit were also indicated. The Planning Commission reviewed this use permit three times, first in May, again in August of last year, and at the last point here in January this year. We had three review hearings. We really wanted to go over all the variety of issues. Brewing Company, when they first heard of these issues, they really were not being very responsive, and I think as the process went forward, we started with letting them know we wanted to potentially modify the conditions. After that, we even started talking about revoking the use permit, and I think the message got forward that we really wanted the Brewing Company to step forward, to do what they could to help alleviate some of the nuisances in the area. On January 4, the Planning Commission did act to modify the use permit. There's a variety of condition changes that were implemented, and they're in your packet and report, and those conditions were agreed upon by the Brewing Company, and a lot of those measures were voluntary measures that they came to and brought to the table to alleviate some of the nuisances. Some of the changes that they did were to relocate the entrance from the parking lot to the Newport Boulevard side of the building. When a line forms, the queue would form in the parking lot and create a problem for the residents who live right on the parking lot. One of the other items, they opened the kitchen up full-time with a full menu. They did have an abbreviated bar menu in the evening, the late evening, and so that was discontinued. They put up signs to let the patrons know that they live, residents live nearby, and that they wanted them to be more respectful of the neighborhood. They also stepped up security. Employee training on responsible alcohol sales was also conducted. They're building, they will be building a trash enclosure cover to help screen the trash enclosure, and a variety of other issues, so, you know, that's in your packet there. An appeal was filed by residents of the Canary Village. Really, the appeal didn't forward any new information that the Planning Commission didn't consider. We did also receive two letters from Mr. Lowe, a resident who lives really adjacent to the parking lot, and those issues were also considered by the Planning Commission. And staff is recommending that you deny the appeal and you uphold the decision of the Planning Commission. All of the conditions that the Planning Commission worked hard to achieve really hopefully will address the issues. We feel there's been a beneficial impact to the area. It may not be perfect, but I think the efforts made by the Brewing Company are in their step in the right direction. Lastly, the Planning Commission required a review of the hearing of the use permit in October of this year to see how the measures were effective or not. One point I wanted to make is that if the City Council feels that, based on the testimony here and the information and the record that you've been given, that there is additional measures that need to be taken, one of the findings that you'll need to make, assuming that the Brewing Company isn't going to be agreeable to those changes, you'd have to make a finding that it's detrimental to the community and that the condition change really alleviates that condition. And that's basically it. There's several issues in the staff report I wanted to kind of highlight, and they're there for your consideration. Residents were looking at, questioning whether or not a bar was authorized during the late evening hours. It has a bar-like character, whereas during the daylight hours, lunchtime crowd, it's fairly more like a restaurant, if you will. And I just want to point out that we authorized a restaurant and a brew pub with hours till 11:00 during the week and 2:00 a.m. on the weekends, and I think it's fairly straightforward to understand that people don't buy a lot of food at midnight or 1:00 a.m., and so the Planning Commission considered that issue and really felt that a modification of the conditions to help clarify them was in order, and that was also done. You'll also hear talk this evening about, you know, conditions with Coastal Commission condition and the city's use permit condition that are in conflict with each other. The Planning Commission didn't act to change those conditions because there really wasn't evidence that there's a parking problem out there. And that's a condition, Condition Number 6, and Special Condition Number 1 of the coastal development permit. What we want to do is kind of defer that issue until such time as we really understand that there's a real parking problem that needs to be fixed by a change in those conditions.
Jim?
I can answer any questions that you might have.
On that particular item, if the Coastal Commission places a condition that is different from one that the city has, what is the city's obligation to enforce that condition?
Well, in reality, there isn't a responsibility for us to enforce another jurisdiction's condition. However, in this case, the Coastal Commission in 1993 asked that the city enforce this condition. It was brought back to the city, and we reviewed the changes to the permit that Coastal Commission wanted. We made some modifications to the conditions, and we actually sent back a letter saying that we would enforce a condition. The difference is, we told the Coastal Commission that we would enforce the use permit condition, not the Coastal Commission's condition, and there is distinct differences in language. Specifically, it deals with the size of the dining area before 5:00 p.m. The Coastal Commission condition applies daily, seven days a week. The city's condition only applies Monday through Friday. So the differences in those conditions, it just amounts to how large of a dining area can be there on Saturday and Sunday, and the city indicated that we would enforce the city's condition, not their condition.
You know, that's, what is it, 1,500 feet of dining area?
That's correct.
Before 5:00, and then after 5:00, what's the total dining area that they have?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. I can get that number, but it is--
Double, triple, quadruple?
No, it probably increases by maybe a third.
Okay, so maybe 2,000, 2,200?
I think it's close to 2,300. I can check the file for the exact number. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay, and we feel that there really isn't, you know, it's a parking problem on the weekends there even, maybe during the summer?
Well, there may indeed be. We don't really have information to say that there is a parking problem or there's not a parking problem, and that's, one of the things we wanted to do is if we wanted to change that condition, we really wanted to demonstrate that there is a parking problem before we made a change to our condition.
You suggest a parking study in your report. And with that, in any way, if we conduct a parking study and we find that there is an impact, then in October, we could make the necessary changes to that? Or what would be the process?
I think that we could do that. We would need to find evidence that there really is a parking problem attributable to the use permit, and obviously, we'd have to evaluate that at a public hearing, and if indeed there is a parking problem, changing the hours to be consistent with the Coastal Commission's permit, we could make that change at a later date, I guess.
In our recommendation, too, it says, and I'm not quite sure I understand where you're coming from here, it says, "Set aside the potential modification of Condition Number 6 to be consistent with the Coastal Commission. Special Condition Number 1 be set aside until a parking study is completed." Are there some words there that perhaps need to be modified to make it understandable?
There's probably some words that need to be taken out of there to make it more understandable. It's poorly written, but the concept is to set that issue aside until we have more information.
Okay, so in other words, if you say, the second be set aside, if that were crossed out?
Yes.
Then it works?
Yes.
Okay.
Jim, is, you know, I imagine that the Coastal Commission has their own ability to enforce their conditions on coastal development permits, because, I mean, I know they're doing it in West Newport with the Dune, and I think we had an issue with Mobile Home Park.
Indeed, they do. Will they pick this one up and actually enforce it? I don't know.
Okay, so there is no pending enforcement action, or is there, you know, if there's been any request to enforce it?
Not that I'm aware of. Coastal Commission staff is aware of the issue, because I've made inquiries of them about the differences in the conditions. Has that led to them acting? I don't know.
Counselor, what have-
Jim, it's my understanding, though, that the coastal commission has reaffirmed that the understanding that they have is that that condition is to be applied seven days a week.
I did talk to Carl Schwing, who's one of their program analysts. He did indicate that their condition does apply seven days a week. And after looking at their condition, I don't think there's any dispute that their condition does apply seven days a week, and our condition just happens to be Monday through Friday.
And we don't really quite understand, at this point, since it happened long ago, how it was that we implemented a condition in the use permit that was different than the mandate from the coastal commission.
I really can't explain why that change wasn't made. In September of nineteen ninety-three, the city council considered the changes that the coastal commission made to the use permit, and this was one of several changes that needed to be done. In looking at the record, it shows that all of the other conditions that were necessary to implement their action were incorporated into the conditions of approval. However, this one was not. Why? I don't know.
Possibly because an error was made.
It's possible.
Well, does the minutes reflect any conversation about the difference in times?
None that I could find. It clearly refers to an exhibit to the staff report, which did not include the change necessary to implement the coastal commission's condition. Why that change wasn't made by staff for the attachment, I'm not sure. I think in looking at the record, the purpose of that hearing was to consider all the changes the coastal commission made. The coastal development permit was an attachment to the staff report, and a simple inspection of the two conditions would have revealed that they're different. For whatever reason, it just didn't make it into the record.
So there was a list of conditions attached to a staff report that omitted this one, and unless the council was, you know, checking back and forth, they might have missed that? I mean, we're trying to divine what they discussed or didn't discuss, or maybe they purposely left it off, or maybe they left it off because they just didn't realize it was left off. I mean, we just don't know anything, is basically what I'm saying.
I'm not, you know, the attached conditions of approval said Monday through Friday, the coastal development permit condition was in a separate attachment, and for whatever reason, they weren't consistent with each other. I can't say that the council purposefully left it out either.
And they've operated this way since the issuance of that permit?
Yes, they have.
Go ahead, Mike.
Go ahead.
But was there anything in the record of discussion to the effect that there was an intent to have that difference?
No.
At the time the council met, or in the staff report, or?
In my review of the minutes, there was no intent in that regard. I think the overall intent was to change the conditions to be consistent with the coastal commission's mandates. And the record also reflects that the brewing company agreed to those conditions of the coastal commission and hours. So, I mean, was there an error? The record clearly doesn't show it, but it's possible.
Do we have a record of how far back complaints go as far as, like, weekend daytime hours?
In my review of the record, this is the only time this issue has come up, and that's nineteen- two thousand and six. I'm not aware of any prior complaints.
Okay. Nancy?
On the security personnel, that right now they do a sweep, and it's been suggested that it would be more effective to have someone out there on a permanent basis during that period. Has the brewing company reacted to that in any way? Do they have-
Representatives of the brewing company are here this evening. They are aware of the issue, and I think they can speak for themselves when they have a chance to speak-
Okay, but that didn't come up with the planning commission?
It was discussed at the planning commission, and the planning commission didn't make that a mandate. What the planning commission did is they required the preparation of a security operations plan to be reviewed and approved by police and planning. Within that, we could indicate whether it's a sweep, or we can indicate that there's a security person stationed there. We can incorporate it in that plan.
Okay.
Does anybody have any other questions of Jim? Okay, I think we'll open it up to public comment, but I think we'd like to hear from the Canary Village Concerned group first. I believe that they're the one who appealed this. And sir, please state your name for the record. And also, can you give us a brief description of who your group is or what it is? Is it a legal entity, or is it just a group of residents, or just a week? And how much time do you need to make your presentation?
Well, let me start by giving my name. My name is Bruce Low, L-O-W, and I live on Twenty-Ninth Street in Newport Beach. And, you know, I will try to make my presentation rather brief in maybe five or seven minutes, and-
That'll be fine.
I would, you know, also like to reserve a moment or two at the end of the hearing just to, you know, summarize.
All right, well, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. How about that?
First of all, let me start by indicating to you that I'm going to address basically conditions nine and ten. And Kevin Weida should be here, and he will address condition number six that has to do with the coastal commission.
If you could, though, please start off about your group a little, so we all are aware, you know, who you are and-
Fine. The Canary Village Concerned is a group of persons, and I'll, you know, read you, you know, basically what it says when folks have signed up for that group. It says, "The Canary Village Concerned is a group of residents, property owners, and business persons who are organized and dedicated-" I need my glasses, sorry. "- organized and dedicated to protect the unique mixed-use characteristics of a small area within the city of Newport Beach. The Canary Village is bordered by Thirty-Second Street and Twenty-Eighth Street from Newport Boulevard to the Newport Bay. We believe in equal property rights for residential and commercial owners and tenants alike, and that codes, regulations, and permits should be equally applied and enforced without creating advantage or disadvantage for any one property owner, tenant, and/or entity." You know, I guess that would be the best way to describe, you know, the group of folks.
Thank you.
The first thing that I wanted to do is, Ms. Gardner asked if there was any testimony in the- or evidence with respect to what the city council said in the original hearing about the limitation of the square footage. And, you know, I happen to have here, these are the council minutes from September twenty-seventh, nineteen ninety-three, and I'll submit those to you. In number nine, it says, "Mayor Turner opened the public hearing, et cetera, et cetera," and it goes from "One parking space for each forty square feet," that "the net public area and reduce the allowable daytime net public area to fifteen hundred square feet before five PM." And, you know, it says it again on the next page of the minutes, and it does not say Monday through Friday. It simply says before five PM. And I would submit to you what that means is very clear, is that the council considered it, and, you know, what they meant is seven days a week before five PM. So if I can hand these to someone, we'll introduce those to you. Thank you. You know, essentially, this has been a long road to get here this evening, and, you know, we're not activists. We're a group of people that live in the Canary Village that are, you know, live in our dream, bought multi-million dollar pieces of property, you know, believe that we have the right to some reasonable quiet enjoyment, to enjoy our residences just as others do theirs. In this circumstance, we suffer from a tremendous amount of abuses from the Newport Brewery. And, you know, I've been asked before, "Well, is it getting better?" Well, you know, it is getting better. But, you know, to give you an analogy, they started at a hundred and eighty miles an hour down the streets, switching lanes, and now they've slowed down to a hundred and twenty, and they're not switching lanes. So is that making it better when the speed limit is sixty-five? Well, you know, I guess it is, but does that take it to a standard that's acceptable? I don't believe so. When I talk about abuses, you know, and I think that the Newport Brewery has good intentions, that they are, you know, decent people, that, you know, are not trying to go out of their way to upset the neighborhood. But I believe that they have a crowd of patrons that cannot be controlled. You know, they've tried this, and they've tried that, but it continues. And what continues is primarily the abuses in the parking lot. It's not so much the noise that comes out of their place, but it's what occurs in the parking lot. And, you know, that is looking out our windows and seeing people urinate in the parking lot continually. And that can be male or female. Damage to our own private property, you know, people wanting to urinate in my property, on my car, vomiting, yelling and screaming, a party atmosphere. These are things that our neighborhood believes are intolerable, and that they have to be corrected to a standard, a standard that allows us to enjoy our property. Now, we've had a lot of effort between staff, meetings with the brewery folks, and we have not come to where we need to get. And, you know, most specifically in conditions nine and ten, if you look at the original use permit, it attempts to define what kind of an operation it is. What is this place? And it was represented primarily as a restaurant. Yes, it is a brew pub too. You know, maybe not any clear definitions as to what a restaurant/ brew pub is. But I believe that when you look at conditions nine and ten, it certainly describes what this operation is and what this operation is not. And one of the things that troubles me most with respect to the definition is if I go to condition number ten, it says, "The approval of this use permit is for a restaurant slash brew pub and shall not be construed as the approval of a bar slash cocktail lounge or any other use serving alcoholic beverages during hours not corresponding to regular meal service hours." And then in parentheses, "Food products sold or served incidentally to the sale or service of alcoholic beverages shall not be deemed as constituting regular meal service." So, you know, when I take a look at that, what does that mean? You know, it means that it was never approved as a bar. This is a primarily a restaurant operation slash brew pub, as they make a brew on site. Now, what the operator has done is said, "Well, what we'll do is we'll just keep our kitchen open till one o'clock, and that meets the condition of number ten." You know, and I think that is utterly ridiculous. You know, who in their right mind, you know, would say, "Well, as long as you have a kitchen open, we really don't care if you sell food or not. You can do whatever you want." I don't think that was the intent. I don't think that's what this use permit says. And it says that incidental service of this, whether the kitchen is open or not open, that incidental service is not going to be- does not constitute regular meal service. And the reason is because regular meal service is not at one o'clock in the morning. So, you know, I don't think that we need to reinvent the wheel. I think that we just need to simply go back to what this use permit says, and it says simply what the operation is and what the operation is not. And, you know, in this circumstance, the easiest way would be to close the operation at eleven o'clock, and it wouldn't have the ability to be a bar because it's Jekyll and Hyde. This is actually a pretty nice little place, you know, until the sun goes down and, you know, the alcohol starts pouring, and the patrons get lit, and, you know, the party goes on. The party goes on inside, the party goes on in the parking lot and in the surrounding areas. And, you know, that is what needs to be curtailed. It just simply isn't fair that the brewery is allowed to do whatever they want under the circumstances of condition number ten by opening their kitchen till one o'clock in the morning. That's not how this works. Now, there may be some measures in the middle that can move this in a direction the right way for our neighborhood, but, you know, certainly by expanding and changing the language in the use permit from that which is ancillary to, you know, that which is primary, is latitude that they're giving to the brewery, is being given to the brewery that is not the original intent. And I don't think that was intent of the planning commission. And, you know, what I do know in watching this process, that staff can push information your way. You get a tremendous amount of stuff. Look at the, you know, the size of this. What you're looking at is probably one-tenth of the paperwork that's been generated on these to the public hearings. They give an opinion, and we kind of head that direction. And I believe that if you go back to the basics and you look at what was approved in this use permit, that specific language in ten was designed to make sure they don't turn into what they have turned into. It was to make sure that this operation maintained characteristics of a restaurant and never was able to grow into a bar. And in this circumstance, you know, what we're doing is we're twisting the words and the language and saying, "Well, heck, let's make it a bar," and we solve that by opening the restaurant till one o'clock in the morning, and that makes it a restaurant. No, it doesn't. It's the abuses that are caused in our neighborhood that are a problem. It is the use permit that was the vehicle to contain them. And the use permit is not containing them. The abuses continue, and that's what we need to have corrected. Now, the crowd, when they have that much alcohol in them, is uncontrollable. You know, they've tried to do it. They can't get it done. They want to blame it on somebody else. They want to say the patrons belong to this person, or they don't belong to us. But it simply doesn't work. We have a broken environment in the Canary Village. And, you know, we're here tonight not because we want to be here. We're here tonight to ask you to try to dial in some sanity to the neighborhood that we live in, the neighborhood that we make investments in, the neighborhood that we really do enjoy. And I can tell you that of all of these establishments that are operating businesses there, we have one that is totally outrageous. The Abe Bar, we have no problems with them. The Canary, they've changed the way they do business, and they're a respectable neighbor and a great addition to the city. The Blue Water Grill, it's a fabulous restaurant. You know, they close down at eleven o'clock. They're all very successful restaurants, and they are a positive to the neighborhood. Unfortunately, the brewery is part of the past, and they need to change the way that they do business. They need to alter the business plan because the world has changed around them, or the city council needs to do something about it. So we've come here looking for solutions. And, you know, we hope that in the information that's been supplied to you, that you are able to, you know, feel and see what we go through. There are a few other persons that want to speak here tonight, and, you know, what I would do is just turn this over to Kevin Weida and let him explain to you where our position is on number six, and, you know, then we'll be through.
I have a question.
Yes.
Your letter of March second.
Yes?
Page three forty-two. It's really not that long. Thursday nights, Thursday nights they close at eleven. Are Thursday nights a problem?
Thursday nights, you know, are a problem. You know, generally what happens is, you know, after ten o'clock. But Thursday nights, you know, when that's a party night, it doesn't end at eleven o'clock. It, you know, it continues in the parking lot. And, you know, it continues to be a problem on Thursday nights. But it's not anywhere near like it is on Friday and Saturday.
All right. But then if it's a problem, I guess I'm getting at, would the closing at eleven on Friday and Saturday help, or would it just- you still have a problem, but it would just be an earlier problem perhaps?
Well, I think that closing at eleven o'clock would change the complexion of the bar. And, you know, persons that want to go out and, you know, get hammered are not likely to go to a place that closes at eleven. And I think that if you close at eleven, people would move on to, you know, to different places to, you know, do whatever it is that they need to do by consuming massive amounts of alcohol. But the problem on Thursday is minimal compared to the Friday and Saturday.
Counselor, what do you have?
A couple of questions for you, because part of what we have to establish is, is there a violation of the use permit? And I was looking at condition seven, which refers to the time of operation. Are they operating outside of those hours? Are they in compliance with that condition?
I don't have seven in front of me, but what I'm going to tell you-
Okay, what talks about-
That's all right. Let me try to answer your question. Is that they close at one o'clock on Saturday and Friday, and they close at eleven o'clock all of the other days. And I think Jim might have said that they're open till two. They're really not. They're open till one o'clock.
Okay. So provided they're not opening before six AM, then they are and would be in compliance with that, it would seem?
Well, it would seem, you know, we talked about whether six AM is really, you know, necessary because they really don't have any business going on there till, you know, ten or eleven. But I think six AM is kind of one of those, you know, things that, you know, bars open at six because they only have to close for four hours, so.
And then number ten, while you might disagree that this constitutes a restaurant, is, from what you've observed, you know, are they providing the food in conformance with that condition?
Well, I have not personally observed, you know, what occurs in there after ten o'clock at night, so I couldn't state to that. But I do know that there are a couple of other persons in our group that have experience and may be able to address that for you better.
Mike?
Yeah, a few questions, if you don't mind. You observe people that are rowdy and behaving badly. How is it that you can tell that they are from the brew pub?
Well, you can see them walk in and out of the door. You know, so that would be a good example, and I have a view of the door.
So you actually observe people coming out of that-
So, you actually observe people coming out of that establishment and then doing-
Absolutely.
-rowdy things?
Yes, I do.
Okay. The-
And then I watch them go back in, too.
Okay. The action that was taken in 1993, at that time, I believe that's when the hard liquor license was approved, and at the same time, and at the same time as condition number 10 was put together, they also approved hours of operation until 1:00 AM. Do you find that a little bit incongruous with your position regarding their need to serve food until into the wee hours and maintain the character of a restaurant into the wee hours?
Well, you know, I could tell you that, you know, my experience in observation of city government doesn't make it perfect. So, you know, there are many inconsistencies with actions that are taken. But I can tell you that Denny's is open 24 hours a day. You know, I think that some Denny's may even have a liquor license. You know, they seem to be able to serve food at 1:00 in the morning and it works for them. I can't speak to the specific mind of, you know, the council or the applicant at that point in time. And I do understand what you're saying, and there may have been some contemplation of a transitional type of a business, but, you know, I don't believe that it was ever considered so transitional that it's 90% alcohol after 10:00 by the admissions of the operator. So, you know, 90% alcohol, I have a hard time trying to figure out how you dial in a restaurant in, you know, in those circumstances. And I don't think that was ever contemplated in '93 or '99, nor represented.
Let me switch gears for a second. You've also suggested that additional security in the parking lot might be an appropriate thing, full-time security, I think. And so, what, in your view, at what point in time should that full-time security be implemented?
Well, you know, when we talk about full-time security, what, you know, I am talking about is a permanent presence in the parking lot. And I believe that that should occur at 10:00 at night and continue until 30 minutes after closing. So, I guess two nights a week, that would be three and a half hours, and on Thursday nights, it would be one and a half hours.
And then with regard to this queuing issue about where patrons should queue, if there were to be a change that you would recommend about at what point, I think there was an indication you were looking for a specific point in time that that condition be applied?
Well, I think that at 9:00 is a good time to apply that condition and move the entrance exclusively, entrance and exit to the front door. And that the rear door that exits into the parking lot would be used for an emergency door and emergency door only. What you have is, they may load to the front, but people will exit out the back. The taxis will come around to, you know, pick folks up and they'll slip out the back and, you know, then jump into the taxis or slip out the back and go into their car. So, it was my suggestion that if the door was moved certain, time certain, at 9:00 to the front, and that there was no use of the rear door, you know, after 9:00 with the exception of a fire or emergency, that that likely would reduce the impact to our neighborhood.
And did you discuss these specific ideas with the owners of the brew pub?
Well, I would say yes and no. I, you know, would say that the environment for discussions with the brewery have not been, you know, that favorable. We've had more discussions with staff. The attorney for the brewery told me, you know, "We're willing to talk about anything with the exception of a change in hours or a change in the allowable service area." Well, you know, our group thinks that condition six has an impact on the service area by way of the coastal commission requirement, and, you know, that put the two of us at an impasse. However, I have had continual or ongoing discussions, you know, with staff, and I think that staff is aware and has been aware for quite some time about those modifications that have been suggested.
Actually, the alcohol service was approved with the amendment of the use permit in 1999. I know because it was on the planning commission. And I guess my question to you is that in 1999, when the planning commission approved the hard liquor service at this establishment, there was no evidence at the time that there was any problems with the brew pub. And I guess my question to you is, do you have any feelings as to what you think's causing the problem? Is it the fact that we allowed the hard liquor sales or is it the hours of operation that go past 11:00?
Well, I think when I go back and take a peek at the record, you know, the police department, you know, said that they had issue with hard alcohol in District 15, you know, by taking a look at the record. But they had said, and I'm, you know, trying to pull this off the top of my head, that, you know, they thought that these were decent operators and in light of that, that, you know, they thought that the addition of the hard liquor was probably going to be okay. I, you know, believe that no one anticipated that this bar was going to move from here to there. However, I think there are changes since 1999, and, you know, one of those changes that I believe is that the city of Huntington Beach has really cracked down considerably. And, you know, they have moved many of the persons that used to go to Huntington Beach now come to Newport Beach. And if it's not the people from Newport Beach, it's the people from Chino and Riverside, you know, that want to come down here because this is a place to party. And this area, the brewery included, you know, seems like a pretty safe place to, you know, be very, very rowdy. So, I think that the area has grown, and to take a look at a snapshot in 1999 and say, "What's happened?", well, evolution has happened.
A question. The mixed-use units that I think that you're living in are relatively new. Were they there in 1999?
No, sir, they were not.
When were they constructed?
The one that I live in is just about two years, and the other ones on 30th Street, I believe, are maybe three and a half years.
Okay, thank you.
Well, actually, that leads me to a question. Over the two years that you've lived there, have you noticed the problem is worse, better, the same?
I'll address it again. They used to be going 180, switching lanes, now they're going 120, so.
I guess, were they going 180 two years ago?
Yeah, they were going 180 two years ago. And I think that they have made some improvements. Well, what kind of improvements have they made? Well, the trucks don't come and pump the grease out at 3:30 in the morning any longer. They do it during the day. The people that collect all of the bottles don't do that at 4:00 in the morning any longer. They do it at a different time. They don't wheel the pops and barley and, you know, leave them in open containers, you know, 20 feet from our house anymore. They now put them in a little different area and cover them. So, you know, there are, you know, positives that have occurred, but the main problem has always been the nuisance in the parking lot. And the nuisance in the parking lot, it has, it's gotten a little better, but it's not to a standard of acceptability yet.
But that nuisance probably didn't arise until there was someone to be bothered by it, would you say?
Well, you know, if a tree falls and, you know, no one hears it, it makes a sound.
Exactly, my point.
You know, that may be so, but I also believe that, you know, when you take a look at the character of the neighborhood, you know, some more sophisticated folks have moved in that don't mind being vocal or, you know, don't mind saying, you know, "We don't like that." So, you know, I think it's a combination of both. It may not have made a sound, but, you know, it also may be that persons were hearing the sound but were, you know, afraid or maybe uneducated on how to deal with it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Low? Okay, you mentioned that-
Mr. Weida's going to address the person.
Well, yeah, why don't we take his now and then we'll have the brew company come up and make their presentation after him.
Very well. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. My name is Kevin Weida. I am a resident of Newport Beach. I operate my business on 429 30th Street. Before I talk about condition number six, which is really what I want to talk about tonight, I want to add two things to what Bruce was talking about. And the two things that I think we should say is, one, we're not as a group trying to drive this business out of town. They're a vital part of the neighborhood. We encourage mixed uses. In fact, many of the people that are in that neighborhood are there for that very reason because it's mixed use and eclectic. And, you know, they offer a service that's valuable. Many of the people that are in the group are patrons of the brewery. So, our intent isn't to drive them out of town, it's just to get them to comply with their CUP and CDP. Having said that, the best testimony given about what they do with regard to what Bruce was talking about is, in the first planning commission hearing, the operator of the business sat up here and said that after 10:00 at night or 10:30 or 11:00 at night, 90% of their sales are alcohol, that they just don't sell food, that they offer a limited menu or now a full menu. But, and I think to quote, "We can't force them to eat food. They're there to buy alcohol." And that's exactly what we're saying is, do they need to be open at 1:00 in the morning to sell food? They're not selling food, they're selling 90% alcohol. So, most of the problems occur late at night on Friday and Saturday night. We think by limiting the hours of operation to 11:00 at night, like the rest of the restaurants in the area, the Cannery being a great example, and even what they do during, you know, Monday through Thursday, would probably solve a lot of those late-night problems. So, that's all I want to talk about on that, and now I want to get to number six. There's been a lot of discussion about the CDP and the CUP, and I'm a little unclear why there's so much discussion about that because there is a CDP that says, seven days a week, they'll operate 1,500 square feet until 5:00. The CUP, whether by mistake or oversight, is not consistent with that, but why is there so much discussion about it? I mean, under any other CDP in the city, a development CDP, for example, when a new project comes forward, the city does enforce that. And in fact, the coastal commission is the last stop in getting approvals, and those conditions are usually transferred onto the CUP and enforced by the city or at least Watts. So, it would be very unusual for a new development, let's say, to have a CDP and then be in violation of that, but yet be in conformance with the CUP. It just doesn't make sense why we're having that discussion. If the applicant really wants to change that condition and go back to the coastal commission, they have a vehicle for that. He can amend the permit. Naturally, he doesn't want to do that, and when the planning commission asked him if he would voluntarily modify the CUP during the planning commission hearings to be consistent with the coastal commission CDP, they said no, and with good reason. If I were in their shoes, I wouldn't want to do that either. I think if they go back to the coastal commission and give them another bite at the apple, they're going to take a deeper look and scrutinize it further. There'll be parking studies and a lot of due diligence done, and they'll probably end up in a lesser situation than they're in with the CDP now. So, I don't know why we keep talking about it. I think it's the city's obligation to say, "Look, we got a CDP here, that's not consistent with our CUP for whatever reason. They need to line up. It's that simple." This group is pretty dedicated, as you can see, we've been in this kind of discussion for almost a year now, to get to the bottom of it and to get it straightened out and to have an equal application of the zoning code and the CUPs that are issued. I don't think they're going to go away if they, if things don't happen here tonight that are in the favor of the group. And there's been a lot of talk about the group wanting to go straight to the coastal commission and get them involved. I've sort of been the lone voice in that group that says, "I don't think we want to do that. The coastal commission's difficult to deal with at best, as this council knows, and I'm not sure they want to go over there and open that up." I don't think that any of the people in our group or the brewery or this city are going to benefit by bringing the coastal commission into this thing and reopening it up. So, I don't think I can hold them at bay forever. If there's not some results here tonight, I'm pretty certain that the group's going to go over to coastal commission and try and open it up, maybe ask for a hearing and find out why these people for 13 or 15 years haven't abided by their CDP. I mean, the argument that, "Well, you know, yeah, it's bad behavior and they haven't been abiding by it, but since they've been doing it for so long, we might as well let it be status quo." That just doesn't, this doesn't hold. I don't understand why we're having that discussion. So, as hard as I've tried to keep them away from the coastal commission, I think that's definitely the next step. Regarding, you know, a parking survey that was discussed here earlier tonight by Mr. Campbell, I think if a parking survey is done to determine, you know, whether they should be in compliance with the CDP and whether the CUP should change to match that or not, it's a pretty lengthy thing. If one of these needs to be done, it should probably be done by the coastal commission standard and find out what their weigh-in is on it, what parameters they would want to see. As a developer in the neighborhood, I can tell you that the parking studies we've done for the coastal commission are pretty extensive, and generally, they want to encompass a lot of seasons. I mean, you certainly wouldn't do one in the winter, and at a minimum, you'd want to have a full summer season. So, I think that, you know, that's not going to be an easy thing to get, it's going to take some time, and further delay only benefits the operator because it just allows them to continue this bad behavior and noncompliance, and it's actually a bonus to them to just delay it as long as they can. So, something like that is going to be a lengthy process, and certainly at a minimum, it should have coastal commission weigh-in on what the parameters of that will be. They are effective. I think if they did a proper survey there, it could be expensive and quite telling about, you know, about the parking abuses in the neighborhood by that operator. And really, that's what it's all about. It's about the parking. As you know, we have a parking problem on the peninsula anyway. Summertime is worse. There are a lot of bars and restaurants down there that contribute to it. It's not just one person. But having been on the street now, my office has been on that street for almost 10 years, and I'm in the neighborhood a lot, they contribute largely to the parking problem. And that's really the coastal commission's concern. That's why they're limiting the floor area ratio. It's all about the parking. And when people come here for a development permit, let's say a single family residence, they're not able to waive off parking, and there are people here that'll testify tonight about some of the lengths they've had to go through to satisfy just one parking spot. These people here, you know, you're talking about 60, 80, or 100 parking spots that are being taken up village-wide over, you know, peak hours when the restaurant's full. So, they've got a parking lot in their parking lot that probably has 40 or 50 cars in it, and there's a city parking lot right next door that has 45 cars in it. Regularly, they take all that parking and all of the parking from Villa Way to Newport Boulevard on 30th Street. It's an inordinate amount of parking for one business, and it's unfair to the other business operators and residents in the area. And this is what the coastal commission's honed in on and says, "That's why they need to limit the floor area ratio between, you know, before 5:00 in the afternoon." So, without going over all the testimony that was in the planning commission, I would just like to close by saying, we think that they need to, you need to restrict the hours to 11:00 at night. We respectfully request that you enforce the CDP or at least make the use permit consistent with the CDP. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, I'd like to hear from the-
Could I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
I've been puzzled with this whole condition six. I mean, I understand that we like consistency, but are you, from where that parking lot is, I know the coastal commission's concern is access to the beaches and that sort of thing. Are you saying that because they are open on the weekends before 5:00, that that kind of access is impacted? Or are you saying that just, that the businesses, because there's parking, businesses don't have the other parking that they might have otherwise?
Well, I think it's a combination of both. I can't really speak to the coastal commission perspective, although I have a lot of knowledge what I think their perspective is. I don't want to answer the question for them, but generally, you know, they don't want anybody competing for public parking. And this business would compete largely for public parking that would service the businesses and/or the beach. It may service the beach in that location, it's pretty close to the beach. But I think the issue is, are they taking more parking than they should and are they making a parking impact? And I think the answer would be yes, that they do park on the street. I would only challenge all of you to go over there during any game playoff season and see if you can find a parking space on 30th Street or even in the city parking lot adjacent to the brewery. I would say you'd probably be unable to. I mean, I witness it a lot, and, you know, they take a lot of parking there. Each person, maybe two people come in a car, and, you know, how many people will that restaurant hold? It holds a lot of people. So, definitely they are competing for visitor parking on the street. No question.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, if we could hear from representatives of the brew pub.
I'm Jerry Colby. I'm the operator for the Newport Beach Brewing Company. I don't know what to say. I said so much in the last one, so I feel I'm repeating it, but I guess I could. We've opened up since '95. They talk about the way the crowd goes as far as time of the day goes. Since day one, April 1st of '95, we opened up, and I remember the big dinner crowd there early, and then it kind of mellowed out, and then we're the only brew pub in Newport Beach, which is kind of very unique in a city. People hang out and enjoy beers, handcrafted beers. So, it was kind of, it was a different feel of the restaurant brew pub as the night went on. You know, 12 years later, it's kind of, I feel it's running the exact same way. It's people come in for dinner early, and then they hang out, and it's a social environment It's people come in for dinner early, and then they hang out. And it's a social environment for them to hang out in. I've tried. It's amazing to me that, hearing some of the stuff these guys are saying, because I know that Bruce Lau and I have talked, and he's actually told me, "You know, you guys are doing a great job." Just a couple of days ago told me that. "I know you're doing a great job. You're really trying." This open communication is what we tried to get to a year and a half ago when we started this thing. And it was such closed doors in the beginning, that I think, I'm hoping that gets to the point. Like I just told Bruce, "Bruce, call me. If you have a problem, call me. I'm open-door policy. I'm here to work. I'm a good neighbor policy. I want this thing to work between all of us here." It's kind of like, you know, if you have a problem and your neighbor's having a party, and it's loud, and you want him to calm it down, him or her, you call next door and you say, "Hey, you guys are being too loud. Can you keep it down?" That's all I'm asking for, is give me that chance to help you guys out. So, I mean, again, I don't know how much more to say than, we've tried a lot to work on these issues. We voluntarily set conditions, changed them a bit, to help the environment out. Hopefully, it does. It's a mixed community. It's not perfect. You know, it's not, I don't know how perfect it'll ever be. So, basically, I just, I think I just came here to field questions. I think I'm better at that than kind of trying to go on.
Okay. Councilman Webb?
Condition nine indicates that the operator shall at all times maintain records which reflect separately the gross sales of food and gross sales of alcohol. Records shall be kept no less frequently than on a quarterly basis. Have you done those records and provided them for the city? What's the percentage of food versus alcohol that's served over a quarterly basis?
Fifty-two percent food, forty-eight percent alcohol.
Okay, so that you feel that you are meeting that requirement, number nine. The, I'm trying to pellant, yeah, pellant I guess it is. Mentioned that they feel that it would be important for you to keep the back door closed, except for emergencies. You have indicated that you will, after 10:00, require people to enter off of Newport Boulevard. Do you have a problem with having them both enter and exit off of...
We do it as the business states. Weekends, for sure, we do it at 9:00, right away. At 9:00 on a Friday and Saturday night, that line's moved around to the front, off Newport Boulevard. If we got crowded at 6:00, that line would move to the front. And I'm not, so it's the 9:00 thing is, to me, it's kind of ridiculous, because I'm here to help the neighborhood out and keep, trying to keep peace and harmony in where we're at. So, I just, that line gets moved on the weekends, Friday, Saturday, at 9:00, at the very latest, should I say.
What about restricting the exits to the front of the facility?
Now, are we talking this Friday and Saturday again? Because those, they go out Newport Boulevard. There's no, there's a security guard sitting at that door, directing everybody to go off the patio, keep it away from the neighbors.
Okay, so you feel that you are doing that?
Oh, yes. That's definitely happened.
Is that part of your security plan that you will plan on submitting?
It sure is. Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Solich?
Were you the owner in 1999?
I was just brought in as a GM at the time, and then I just recently became, well, three years ago, became one of the owners.
I was on the planning commission in 99 when this amendment was approved. And at the time, the brew company represented that they needed the expanded alcohol service, because for business reasons, that the business was hurting, I guess, just serving beer with meals. And I guess my question is, since that approval was given to you, how much has your business increased over what you had prior to 1999?
Jeez. Well, sixty, seventy percent, probably, because of that.
And I presume you contributed a lot of that to the full-service alcohol being available?
Yeah, I guess, if I can answer that, if you're done, I can kind of go back and forth in this a little bit. Is what was happening at the time is, we'd get, your food sales would go along, and then all of a sudden, people would be drinking microbrew beers, and then all of a sudden, they kind of get tired of drinking beers. So, we'd start losing crowds, and it started getting earlier and earlier. You know, it started at 11:00, then 10:00, and then started, so our sales kept, started plummeting. So, we were in an area that, putting a full liquor license in there definitely helped keep the people from leaving our establishment, enjoying their time there, I guess. I don't, I mean, that's, I don't know if that's kind of what you're asking or not, or...
Well, partly. Let me ask you another question. What was your percentage of food sales to alcohol sales, 1999 and earlier?
I think at that time, it was like fifty-six percent, maybe, something like that.
Fifty-six percent food. So, now it's dropped to fifty-two.
And, you know, putting the full menu on at late night, I'm just talking to a couple of people today. I mean, it's actually helped, it was back in the day when somebody come in after 10:00 and want to get a salad, like somebody want to come in and just have a light meal, we wouldn't do a salad. It would just, they'd lose a sale. And now I've kind of geared my staff in the kitchen to actually keep the full, you know, full menu open. And I like it. I really do. I mean, I think the food sales are starting to climb, you know, as far as like the percentage. I mean, even the percentage at fifty-two, I'm confident that it's going to jump up to fifty-four pretty soon, and hopefully back to where we were in 99. And that's, food drives our business, and it's going to keep us there for years. That's in the back of my mind, you know, forever.
Thank you. Councilman Hen?
Do you use a system in your business that allows you to track sales as between food and liquor through the day?
No, it's not, it's not set up that way. Our computer system, our POS system kind of thing, no, it's not set up that way.
Because I know some systems are.
Yeah, we have a dinosaur.
Yours is not?
No.
And if the, you know, there are other restaurants in the area that close at 11:00 seem to be successful, what would be the impact on your business of reorganizing it to be much more of an emphasis on a true restaurant right through its closing time at 11:00? What would be the impact on your business of doing something like that?
I think it'd be devastating, to be honest with you. I mean, we've been set up since 95, since that way, as in the same type of operations since 95. So, I don't, I think just you're, I don't know, you've just taken, exactly, you've been doing it for twelve years and ripping two hours out of it, or four hours on a weekend, it'd be devastating.
Councilman Deel?
Since your business doesn't track, well, since it does track the sales on a daily basis and doesn't provide that breakdown by hour, you wouldn't have records that would show, you know, what the breakdown is between 11:00 and 1:00 AM. Can you share with us anecdotally, what do you think's happening between 11:00 and 1:00 AM?
Well, like I stated in the first commission, I mean, I'm not going to back down on, I mean, I, when I was asked that question, I just said, "I think, you know, how much food and how much alcohol?" So, I just took a wild guess. I couldn't, unless I, you know, started taking every check that came in on a night and analyzed every check that came in on, let's say, a Friday or Saturday night, I could do it that way. But I, I mean, even ninety percent might be wrong. It could be, you know, eighty percent alcohol, twenty percent food. Or it was just a shot, it was just, I threw it out there, and now I can't get rid of that thing. I can't get rid of that statement from that night. It keeps going back to me. So, definitely, I mean, to be honest, there's definitely more alcohol sales than liquor sales, like, or beer sales. It's like any restaurant, or that's going to be open late night, you know. You go to Twenty-One Oceanfront, if they're open at 11:00, the last hour, they're not going to sell much food. So, it's, I mean, it's, does that answer your, okay.
Mr. Mayor? Councilman Solich?
Yeah, following up on Councilmember Hen's question, if you did have your hours limited to closing at 11:00 on Friday and Saturday night, that'd be four hours a week out of your operating schedule. What percentage impact would that have on your revenue, do you think, those four hours?
I've got to figure that one out in my head. I couldn't answer that, I mean, you know, with a decent enough number to get, to give you the answer that you're looking for, I think. I don't know that number unless I really go back and look at, track hourly sales.
Councilman Hen?
So, just to follow up on an earlier question, how hard would it be to track what your business is?
I'm sorry.
How hard would it be to track your business in terms of alcohol and food sales between 11:00 and 1:00 AM on the weekends?
I'd just have to staff myself, you know, there for a month, you know, for the, just to kind of give a good number of what we're doing, and have myself look at every check that comes in. I mean, it's, it's pretty, I've got five stores on the floor, three bartenders. I've just, you know, two bar registers going, so I just, I don't, I'd have to go to each one of those. And every time they order food, you know, give it to me.
On the other hand, you could batch out at 11:00 and reopen from 11:00 to 1:00, or some such system like that.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Councilman Curry?
And just to follow up on Councilmember Webb's question, so I want to make sure you heard it correctly. You would not have any objection to requiring patrons to exit onto Newport Boulevard and leave the parking lot door at 9:00 closed, except for emergencies? In other words, people would both enter the restaurant and leave the restaurant through the Newport Boulevard door?
On Friday and Saturday nights, that we're talking, or...
Yeah, let's say on Friday, on Friday and Saturday nights, would that be true?
We do it already, yes. Yeah, that's our practice.
Anyone else have questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Stephen Miles. I'm the attorney for Newport Beach Brewing Company. And I wanted to take a moment and address some of the questions that came up during the presentation of Mr. Lau. I'd like to kind of point out that on numerous occasions, Mr. Lau mentioned that noise is the preeminent issue, and it's really noise emanating from the parking area. However, as soon as that statement is made, we get into a massive dialogue about condition number six and how that relates between the coastal development permit and the use permit issued by the city, which has nothing at all to do with noise in the parking area. I find it somewhat disingenuous that Mr. Lau can come up here and say that there was difficulties in terms of communication. Newport Beach Brewing Company has remained open book, open door. They're open with their policies. They're open with their, they're open to suggestions and to solutions. And they've provided several voluntary solutions to perceptions of problems in the community and in the neighborhood. I'd like, let's get back to the noise, because there's a lot of conjecture here. And you talk about noise in the parking lot. And then you have a police investigative report that was prepared by the Newport Beach Police Department. Question number two inquired about the noise being generated by the restaurant. And this is the big-ticket item. Investigating officers observed the entire exterior perimeter of the restaurant throughout the evening and night on five separate dates. Thursday, August 31st, Friday, September 1st, Saturday, September 2nd, Sunday, September 3rd, and Friday, September 8th. The only noise came from the patio area which bordered Newport Boulevard. The noise was from patrons talking per en, not from amplified music in per en. The noise would be drowned out when multiple cars passed the location. The rear or bayside of NVBC remained quiet and trouble-free during the restaurant's hours of operation. The only door that remained open was the patio door which faced Newport Boulevard. All windows were kept closed. And on one occasion, in about twenty-two hundred hours, when a patron opened the window, the security staff immediately responded and closed the window. The rear bayside doors, when being used as the entrance-exit, were kept closed, except during ingress, egress of patrons. This is the hard fact. This is the evidence that the city has called the police department to prepare. That relates to the issue of noise emanating from the parking lot. The line has been relocated. The problem, from substantial evidence, appears to be resolved. This was a voluntary measure that the brewing company took. That was the big issue of the day. Now, we're talking about condition number six. I'd like to address Mayor Rosansky's question about the coastal commission's enforcement of condition number six. Special condition number two of the coastal development permit specifically points out that any question of interpretation of the coastal development permit conditions is a matter to be resolved and interpreted by the executive director of the coastal commission, not a staff member. And I would also like to put in context, the contact of the staff member at the coastal commission was done prior to the city's receipt of the October 1993 letter, which confirms, and this is at page 291 of your agenda packet, it confirms in very specific terms that the city, on the charge from special condition number one of the coastal development permit, was going to enforce, was going to enforce condition number six in a very specific way. And it's laid out very clearly that it was going to enforce it Monday through Friday. Now, Mr. Weida has come up here and testified why, he doesn't understand why we're talking about this. Well, because Cannery Village is making it an issue, even though the noise is the concern. Now, special condition number six of the coastal development permit is an issue. There's been a proposal, and Mr. Weida appears to be advocating, the opening of a parking study. Again, I mean, thirteen years ago, this, these permits were approved. And I think Mayor Pro Tim Solich pointed out that even through 1999, when the hard liquor approval occurred, there was no evidence of problems. And then you posed the question, "Why is it a problem now?" Well, I would offer that it isn't from people from Chino, as Mr. Lau would offer. I would offer that it's probably from the lots that were constructed in a mixed-use zone immediately adjacent to the brewing company. Now, I'm not saying that just because they came last, that they shouldn't be acknowledged and that their legitimate concerns should be addressed, because I think that they should, and I think that they have. But the point to make is that, I believe Mr. Lau mentioned that his unit was built about two years ago. And previous lots were built about three and a half years ago. Well, it's, it's no, well, it's kind of interesting that those residents that have been living here a little bit longer haven't been complaining. You don't see any complaints from the people that have lived for about three and a half years. And maybe it's just a part of understanding that this is a land-use dynamic. It's a mixed-use zone. It's a zoning issue. And while Mr. Lau likes to offer his standard of acceptability, it's really, I mean, we haven't had a discussion about what is reasonable in terms of operating a restaurant brew pub in a mixed-use zone. It's not perfection, and we're not going to, we're not going to stand here and say that there aren't going to be an incident here and there. But if you read the police investigative report, you'll see that the brewing company is operating better than any other similarly situated establishment. And that's the standard. It's not a standard of perfection, and it's really not a standard of what Mr. Lau thinks is too bar-like or what his standard of acceptability is. Granted, the brewing company really wants to address, to the extent that they can, through operational changes, which they have implemented, those concerns. But when we start getting into business judgment on a use permit that's a vested right, it's problematic. The business judgment is for the brewing company to decide. They have, they have operations that they are well aware of, and they have liabilities associated with it. One of the questions, the issues that I raised with respect to a problem that we had with the planning commission approval is their adjustment to the underage drinking policy of the brewing company. Under the auspice that carding someone at late-night hours is too bar-like, the planning commission is trying to implement a policy whereby the brewing company must accept minors at late hours. We're not trying to hide around the fact that there is an enormous amount of, or a larger amount of alcohol sales after 10:00 PM. We're not going to, it's the nature of it. It's the nature of why it was permitted this way. It's the nature of why the hours of operation are the way that they are. It just doesn't make sense to then not, you know, either ignore that fact and try to say, "You've got to let minors in after hours." It just, from a liability standpoint, and from an operational standpoint, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. And for underage drinking, it doesn't make any sense at all. And the brewing company has learned this, because they've been going to alcohol training classes, which is a condition that they've complied with, and they've gone to sessions with the police department. And the focus is underage drinking. And then one of the other focuses here is pushing food sales. And yet, you're wanting, the opposition is proposing to take away probably the best food sale hours, which are kind of the weekends before 5:00 PM. I mean, that's, that area of the brewing company, if you enter, it's adjacent to the patio, and it's completely tables. It's not, the two bars that... It's not, the two bars that are, that, that make up the brewing company, it's not that, they're tables. So, it's counterintuitive to take that away and to ask the brewing company to continue to push food. Councilwoman Gardner asked a question about how security, how the issue of, I believe it was a permanent security member, whether that was raised at the Planning Commission, was that deliberated? And actually, the, the, the offering of having a permanent security person in the parking lot was never raised. It's been raised now in the staff report due to a subsequent meeting with Mr. Lau and, and city staff. And I would actually point out that I think that that's acceptable to Newport Beach Brewing Company, with the caveat that, again, the brewing company has provided a lot of concessions. They have asked for an additional 30 minutes for their weekday hours of operation. I think it would be appropriate, and the brewing company would accept the additional security, permanent security in the parking lot after 10:00 p.m., which is what Mr. Lau has suggested, up to 30 minutes after closing, on the caveat that you extend the weekday hours between 30 minutes and an hour. That would still put their operations at, at midnight or 11:30, which is two hours earlier than the other establishments in the area. And again, Mr. Colbly has addressed the, the weekend line relocation at 9:00 p.m., has confirmed for you that, that the egress is the same, that, that that is basically being implemented in the way that Mr. Lau would like it to be. So, again, I just want to point out that we've already implemented security measures to, security personnel stay 30 minutes after closing, and there's a dynamic here between the municipal parking lot and the Newport Beach parking lot. And by having Newport Beach have their security there 30 minutes after closing, they're really trying to solve an issue that's greater than the brewing company. They're trying to solve the problem associated with both the municipal parking lot, which is unpatrolled, unmanned, and the, the brewing company's parking lot. I think it's a great gesture, it's an expense, and I think, again, if we're going to go to permanent security, which I think is acceptable, if in fact there's a give and a take, absolutely. I think the brewing company would embrace that. Like they have several of the other conditions that have been proposed that could actually resolve a, a perceived impact by the residents. Again, different than getting into legal dialogue over, over condition six of the coastal development permit. So with that, I would, if, if I can, if there are any questions, I'd entertain those.
Counselman Solich?
Going back to 1999 again. What would be the, the effect if the alcohol permit were amended to cut off hard liquor sales at 11?
That's a, and again, a lot of these are accounting.
But the reason I ask that is, just to put it in perspective, is that when, when the case for the brew company was made, and the Planning Commission at that time granted the, the hard alcohol service was primarily to help the, the food service portion of the operations, which is obviously earlier in the evening.
Again, when we get into some of these accounting questions, I think that we would have to kind of look at these items. It's hard for, for me to say, I, I don't really know the books as well as Mr. Colbly. Maybe I can have him come up and, and assist with that. We have had discussions about how the alcohol sales break down between beer and hard liquor, just because it, I think it relates to this, this definition of what, what is Newport Beach Brewing Company. It's a restaurant slash brewpub, and so really the brewing and the beer element of it has always been part of it. And, and so I was, I had asked about beer to hard liquor sales, but I, I wouldn't be able to guess what happens after 11 with respect to hard liquor versus beer.
Let me make it simple, does, I mean, the question was asked earlier, what, what would happen if the hours of operation were cut back to 11, was indicated it would kill the business? So, would it, does it kill the business to limit hard alcohol sales to 11 o'clock and cut it off after that and only serve beer?
It would be a substantial financial impairment to the business that I don't, respectfully, Mayor Protem, I don't believe is something that is warranted, given the, the body of evidence that's been produced by the study. Again, and, and that's why I like to kind of go back to what the, what the problem is and why, at the start of this whole dynamic, there were concerns, legitimate concerns, from the neighborhood. Not merely the brewing company, but the, the patrons that use both the municipal parking lot and the brewing company parking lot, largely due to other bars and establishments that close at 2:00 a.m. The brewing company wanted to address those concerns, and I think they've done a, a great job of doing that. And so, when you ask me about liquor sale, hard liquor sales after 11, that's why I try to keep, I mean, we can try to get an answer for you, but I always like to bring it back to, well, why are we here? It's a land use dispute based on allegations of nuisance-like incidents, and, and I don't think that that's been established. I think your police investigative report clearly refutes anything that, that Mr. Lau can come up here and, and basically conclude about without any hard evidence. So, my kind of response is that I don't think that, that allowing beer from 11, well, actually on weekdays, it'd be, they close at 11. So, on weekends from 11 to 1, to allow two hours of beer rather than beer and hard liquor, I don't think it's going to make a world of difference in terms of noise and some of the other legitimate concerns that have been addressed by the brewing company.
Anyone else have any questions? I'm sorry? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You have a question for your counsel?
I have a question for the City's legal representative. It seems if you apply a little common sense, it's open between 6:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. Monday to Thursday, okay? And then Friday, Saturday, it's 11:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. It wouldn't seem like people are adjusting their dinner hours, you know, when they eat dinner. So, my concern is that the characteristics of the operation are changing between 11:00 p.m. and 1:00 a.m. I mean, how does that factor into the use permit from a, a legal standpoint, if the characteristics of your operation are changing?
I was just looking at the regulations that we had adopted back in 1997 to differentiate between an eating and drinking establishment and a bar. And I was trying to refresh my memory on how we had set that up, but I have the same, I was the advisor to the Planning Commission when this item came forward, and I remember it quite well, particularly even more, even more clearly, I think, when they asked to go to the hard alcohol sales in addition to the, to the beer. And it was represented, and I know that at the time, the Commission was very concerned about making sure, and the, and the representation was made, that this was a restaurant and the intent was for it to continue to serve food into the late hours of the night and up to 1:00 o'clock, so that there would be an alternative of a place to, people to go to have meals. And I don't think there was ever the representation or the understanding by the Commission that this was going to turn into a bar after 11 o'clock at night, on the basis of adding the distilled spirits. I think it was more to give people an option for something to drink and along with their food, besides just beer. So, I think when that plays into your consideration, I think that it, it's not necessarily just the nuisance, it's the compliance with the conditions and the understanding of how this whole facility was going to operate for the full amount of hours that it was open. I don't know if I answered your question?
Okay, we're going to open this up for remainder of the public to comment. We're going to be limiting public comment to three minutes, so please, you know, tailor your speech accordingly.
I'm Mike Madlock, I'm the, one of the founders of Newport Beach Brewing Company. I did want to speak on behalf of the brewery as well.
Well, I think we've had already two people speak in favor of the brewery. Is it going to be more than, much more than three minutes?
Okay, basically, I think common sense needs to prevail here. The mixed-use issue has been really the issue that, at, at, at stake here. We operated with no problems for many years, and since the mixed-use issue has come up, has really been when we've, we've, we've had the, the problems that we've, that we've had. And getting back to, you know, a, a person that purchases a property that is, that is adjacent to two parking lots and adjacent to the brewery and a sushi bar, there are certain impacts that exist by, by doing that. And I lived over on 100 block of, of 31st Street, and, and I will tell you this, there's many, many, many sleepless nights that, that I've had with parties going on, and I've closed the brewery at 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock in the morning, and I can, I can tell you this, that it's much quieter in the brewery parking lot than it is many nights on 31st Street in a completely all residential area. And I would like any of you to come there at, at, at 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock in the morning and see what I'm talking about, because you'll, you'll actually see this. The Planning Commission, you know, did a, a complete study, they, they, they contacted the police, the ABC, and even the city's own code, code enforcement divisions, and they, and, and into every allegation made. And they voted unanimously to allow us to, to continue to operate the way we have since our inception. Allow the Planning Commission to, to have teeth, set the precedent that if you have code violations or complaints, the planning department has the ability to follow through and enforce such issues. The brewery has made many, many concessions here. We, we, we had an open book, we want to talk to the neighbors, and, and we're professionals, we run a real tight ship, we're not part timers. Prior to construction of the brewery, we spent two and a half years going through city, county, state, federal agencies to, to develop the brewery. We've operated without a single ABC code violation for 12 years, and, and not a single Newport Beach city code violation in regards to disturbances. The brewery is, it pays for health insurance for its workers, it reports its entire income, it pays its city, its state, its federal taxes due in a timely manner. The brewery has provided stable employment for over 30 persons. It is the livelihood and, that our families depend on, and the, and, let's not forget, the brewery has its rights as well. I ask you one thing, who are the Canary Village concerned? We were told originally that there was 50 or 60 people on the list of people that were, that were opposed to the brewery's operation, and, and we were baffled, because we'd never had that many complaints. And Mr. McDaniels said it best when he said in the Planning Commission meeting, "The Planning Commission will not respond to any more letters from this so-called group until the authors of the letters are identified and sign any future correspondence." Since then, how many letters have been received, other than the handwritten appeal by Kevin Wida, the original developer, and, and Bruce Law? There's only been two, and it was from Bruce Law. Please, just let the facts speak for themselves, allow the, the Planning Commission to go on with its business, and let us continue to do our business as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is Billy State, I'm a Canary loft owner, a longstanding business operator in the city of Newport Beach. I'm probably the most, I'm probably the closest to the brewery, and we've started this a long time ago, and I try to use the open door policy with, with them, and basically been shunned, shunned, then harassed, then intimidated, then heckled, then threatened. I mean, I've, I can't, I've walked out of the Planning Commission here twice and been heckled, my house has been vandalized, I witnessed, you know, bloody brawls, you know, urination, defecation, fornication, everything. The, the, the deal is, is that when you read that CUP, the first thing it says on there, it says, "No nuisance in the parking lot," period. You go out in the front of the thing, it says, "Restaurant" on the front of the brewery. When I bought that place, I would have never thought that, that, that what happens there at night when it plays and empties out. We tried to deal with them, the, the parking lot is a full-blown party, okay? It's, it's gotten a little bit better, but it could happen any night. It doesn't have to be a, a Friday, Saturday night. There's guys ripping their shirts off, thinking it's cool to, you know, raise a ruckus, and there's no one in the parking lot to, to deal with it. It could be anytime, anytime after dark, and it's their, it's their parking lot. The police can't see that, I mean, you know, when there's a, when there's a, a situation, the police come and they're, they're gone. You see, the cop cars are out of there. I've got a bird's eye view, I see it all, all the time, and it hasn't changed. They, they, they have not been conditioned to act appropriately. They think it's a joke, they really do. They think it's something that's, that they're just blowing us off. I've been blown off countless times from them, there is no relationship. In fact, Jim Campbell told me that he was going to help us out and work with the neighborhood. He blew me off too, because he thinks it's a joke. It's not a joke. It's a, it's ridiculous, it's a ridiculous party in the parking lot, and it hasn't changed. You know, it just says really clearly, in, in that permit, how they're supposed to act, and that's how they have to do it, period. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Rosnelli, mayor and council. I live in the Canary Village, I've been there four years. I originally started renting above Kevin Wida's office, and it was amazing, it's great, you cannot leave the windows open. I called the police several times on the noise issues, the loitering, the trash, actually had Kevin install a hook that I could hook so that people wouldn't walk up my stairs and create a problem. We're owners, we live in the neighborhood, we do realize that there is a restaurant, there's quite a few, I think there's 73 bars on the peninsula. I mean, certainly we are affected by the Newport Brewery, because it's the closest to all of us, but they're really not abiding by the rules and the codes, and that's really what we're most concerned about. The parking lot is still noisy, I live right up against the parking lot as well, I'm not as closely as affected as a couple of the other lofts. Game day, there's certainly quite a bit of noise, you certainly know who's winning, who's losing by the cheers. Parking lot is definitely taken up by sporting events, and on the weekends, there are people that do park next to my loft and have beach chairs, towels, and they are walking to the beach, as far as part of the concern on parking being for the coastal use as well as for the patrons and the businesses in the neighborhood. I'm certainly all for fair treatment of everybody. I've worked for retail developers since 1989. I know it's not fun to be the tough landlord, I know it's hard to say no, I know it's hard to enforce rules and regulations and not seem like you're being the bad guy, but to really kind of hone everybody in. But this really is a circumstance where we're really looking to you all to enforce the codes and the rules so that other establishments will not take this example and say, hey, they let the Newport Brewery become a bar, let's become a bar. They are a bar, there's a line, you have to show an ID to get into. The Yard House is a brewery, so there is another one in Newport Beach, it'll actually be too soon, they'll have one at Fashion Island. And they certainly know how to control the crowd, control their customer. I think the Newport Brewery does allow for a wild environment in the parking lot. I can't imagine the police are really there for five nights, I'm not doubting them by any means, maybe they weren't there until later at night, it's loud, there are groups, but certainly when you call the police and the police show up, everyone disperses. By the way, as far as the Newport Canary group is concerned, we're the first neighbors to really come up and say something. I know that in one of the meetings that I've come to, someone stood up and said, "I've lived in the Canary Village for 17 years, it's been a problem for 17 years, this isn't something that's new." I think that younger, more aggressive people, living as far as voices, living around the brewery is really why you're having more concerns coming up now. We really have better things to do than to quote complaint to you all, this isn't a complaint, we're not singling them out necessarily, other than the abuses. I mean, it's, it's our lives, it's our home, and you all have done something really fabulous with the area, and I really thank you for that. You know, the about property values have gone up, the aesthetics, and, and I think really the, you know, Newport Beach as a whole, so, thanks for your time. I know this is, it's always late at night for all of us, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's John Fall, I live at 530th Street, excuse me. I live and, I lost my voice. I live and work there. I've been there for three and a half years, so this isn't a new problem. I think we've just come together more as a group, as some others have indicated. I'll keep what I need to say brief, I just feel like I don't understand why they can't comply. I think the Canary is a perfect example. It, it's a bar upstairs to me that serves food, and it's a restaurant downstairs, but they aren't a nuisance in the neighborhood, they stopped serving at 11. Nobody's saying there's a problem there. You've got the brewery right on the opposite side, the complete opposite. I'm not going to go into all the details that everybody's gone into, but everything that we're saying is true. To me, we're talking about four hours of the whole week, and they keep saying that they can't lose those four hours. It, it just doesn't make sense to me. If you're a good restaurant, you're going to be serving food, and that's what people are going to go there for, they aren't going to go there to drink hard alcohol. What restaurant do you know that you, I mean, if you're 18 years old and you're a UCI student, I can't go in there and get a hamburger, I have to be carded, I don't understand. If you're a restaurant, I should be able to go in and get supposedly the brewery. If you're a restaurant, I should be able to go in and get supposedly the brewery has a great hamburger. Why can't I go in at 11:30 at night? So it just, it really doesn't make sense. And I hope that, you know, you guys can help enforce what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fall.
Good evening, Mayor Porzansky. My name is George Schroeder. You know, I would just like to get one thing on the record here. Canary Village has been mixed-use residential for, I don't know how long, for like 20 or 30 years at least. I know Councilman Webb and Ed has been here long enough that you know it's always been mixed-use. There's been mixed-use residential there. So this isn't a new problem that the Canary Lofts have brought upon themselves. Okay? And I've been to many council meetings in the past, when Buzz Purzon, who lives on 29th Street, I think, would come up here and complain about the loud noises in Canary Village by Cafe Lito and the Canary. When Bill Hamilton was trying to get a live entertainment permit, you know, there was a group of residents in the area that would not allow him to get that. So he could not keep his business, and it sold. Ed's college was right when this establishment first came into town in '93. It was a sandwich shop before, and they were going to be a restaurant and brew pub. If you go back and read the record in 1999, part of the findings was that they were losing Snug Harbor, and they were losing the Canary, and they were losing Cafe Lito. So we could perhaps let one more hard liquor license in the area. And the findings were for it to be a restaurant only. Okay, well, what happened is, the Canary did not become part of the lofts. That was bought by a private individual to keep it open. So we didn't lose that hard liquor license there. We gained a hard liquor license here, and it really is operating as a bar. If they card people and don't let people under 21 in, that's a bar. Okay? And the fact that they say, "We need to have this hard liquor license and operate this way to stay in business," I can't tell you, since I've lived in this town about 18 years, how many wonderful restaurants have opened up, tried to stay in business, but they just couldn't hold on. Perhaps they should have gotten a hard liquor license and been able to line up the young people up at, you know, two or three nights a week and sell hard liquor, and they'd still be open too. But it's not our job to provide an environment for an establishment that has conditions to operate a certain way, that they can change their operation and have a financial windfall at the expense of the residents. And I don't live there. I live on the 100 block of 35th Street. And the other man who spoke, he's right at, you know, on the 100 block of 31st Street or 35th Street. It gets very loud, but it usually gets loudest about 1:32, 2:30 a.m., when all the intoxicated, you know, liquor young people are like walking home, riding their bikes home, they're in the shopping carts from Albertson's, just pushing down the street. And if you talk to your police department, okay, they did not support this going for a liquor license in '99, because we have an over-concentration of hard liquor between 32nd Street and Newport Pier. We have perhaps 65% of the hard liquor license and 5% of the land area. That's why we have all the police calls down here. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Good evening, Council. My name is Tony Shepherdson. I live at 421 31st Street in Canary Village. And I'd just like to make a few comments, if I could. The council for the brewery said that it's just the four buildings adjacent to the brewery that are complaining about the noise. I live a block away from the brewery, and I've got to make some general statements, if I might. This is much, about much more than the four units in the brewery. This is about the appeal of the entire Canary Village and what's happening. I've lived on 31st Street for 23 years, and it's been stated that, you know, there was no problem before these units were put up. And I differ with that. When I moved into my place 23 years ago, the brewery was a small gourmet market, and Rudy's was the pie loon, later the boozy rouge. And believe me, I would eat in the boozy rouge every night now, if it was still there. It's the parking, you know, it's been brought up that the police, I don't know if they got into the parking, or whoever testified about the parking, that it isn't as bad as they say. There are days or nights when you can go into Canary Village and the streets have ample parking on them. Those days and nights are few. The majority of the days and nights, the streets are parked from the brewery, from Rudy's, clear on back, pass out the coffee shop to the Canary Restaurant, where there's virtually no parking available. And that's attributable to all the restaurants, to the brewery, to Rudy's, all of them combined. The problem, as I see it, is when you have the brewery, Rudy's, Malarkey's, and alcohol, there's going to be a problem. There's just going to be a problem. And that's why I hope you regulate the hours and bring back some of the charm that we've already lost out of the Canary Village. So your help would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherdson.
Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Joe Reese, and I live in the 200 block of 30th Street. I don't live in the Canary Village. I live outside the Canary Village, but I live on 30th Street, which is the same street that Newport Brew Company is on. I think what is really interesting, and we've been dealing with this for over a year now, trying to work with Newport Brew Company, but when you look back historically in the records of the city council notes, you see that in 1993 and in 1999, the intent of this establishment was to be a restaurant. It's clear. And I ask that you guys take the time to go through that and look at that, because you'll see that that's what the intent was behind it. What's happened since then, though, is it's morphed into a bar. And I can tell you from personal experience, myself and Drew Weatherholt, back in 2006, and I think it was September 2006, we went inside there at 10:30 at night, because I wanted to see what was going on inside the establishment. What we found was a bouncer at the door who checks IDs, because you have to be 21 to get inside the establishment to go in there. And once we went inside, we sat down, and we asked for, looking at the menu, we asked to order food. And we were told we couldn't order food. I wanted to order salad. I was told I couldn't order the salad. So I could tell that it wasn't a restaurant at that point. They weren't operating as a restaurant at that point. When you look at the interior of the establishment, you don't have tables where people are sitting down to eat. You have people all standing around drinking. That's what happens after 10 o'clock at night. Everyone just stands around and drinks. It's not like a restaurant. When we sat here and we explained this to the planning commission, and when the planning commissioners got done, they said it was very clear, that this establishment was operating as a bar. And there was two things that they told them they wanted to see happen. One is that they had a full menu, all the way up until closing. And two, they wanted to start, stop carding them at the door. They wanted them to allow anyone to come in there, if they're a restaurant, if they're truly a restaurant. We heard the attorney tonight and what he was saying. They don't want to stop doing that. The reason why, when you think of a restaurant and a bar establishment that's joined together, they're usually separated. You have a restaurant area in this portion where you serve food. You have a bar area in this, where you serve bar. They don't want to do that. They want to be a full bar. And if you were there on St. Patrick's Day or anywhere around in the area, you would have known just about in that entire day, the operators are full bar. It was a mess down there. Ask the police department. Thirty-two arrests in that area that day. That's what we deal with on a regular basis, every weekend. Every weekend, we're woken up by screaming and yelling at night. We see the urinating, we see the defecation, we see the fornication, we see the fighting. Two weeks or three weeks ago, big fight in the middle of 30th and Newport Boulevard. Ten people fighting out in the middle of the intersection. So yeah, it's out of control. We're asking for your help. We're asking that you recognize that what they've told you tonight is this. They don't want to close from 11 to 1 o'clock, because the only way they can survive, and why they've morphed into a bar, is because of the financial reasons of what they gain from that alcohol. And they don't want to change because of that reason. So we ask that you make them be what they said they were going to be back in 1993. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reese.
Good evening, Council. My name's Drew Weatherholt. I live on 30th Street. I've been a resident for 14 years. I don't want to rehash pretty much everything that you guys have heard, but it is very, there's a big problem there with the alcohol, crime, DUIs, et cetera. You've heard that. I'm speaking on behalf of probably 20-plus residents on both 29th and 30th Streets. We have the constant nightly influx of this, especially on the weekends. But there's something that you guys should really realize. Compare the Newport Brewery to BJ's Restaurant Brewery, which is further down the peninsula. That is a brewery. That, comparing those two establishments are night and day. This is clearly, the brewery is clearly a bar. If you look at the brewery, they allow people 21 or under into that establishment. They don't have security. They don't check ID. And you see a lot of families in that establishment. Newport Brewery, you don't. Clearly, after 10 o'clock, it is clearly a bar. There's clearly a problem with over-consumption of alcohol and over-serving of alcohol within that region. We would like to see you revoke the hard liquor license or simply reduce the hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weatherholt. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Kristin Androslow. I am the other half of Bruce Low. He just is a wee bit more articulate in the letter-writing than I am, so I tend to leave that to him. I just want to kind of go over a few things, and again, it's not a complaint that we're trying to achieve. The issues that we hold, and I've kind of made some notes, so I can really be articulate at this statement. By the operator's own admission, at one of the planning commission meetings, the planning commission said, "You have represented that you are a restaurant until 1 a.m." By the operator's own admission, they have been operating only as a restaurant until 11 p.m. And Jerry's comment was, "We reinstated that, and wow, our sales have picked up," which says to us as residents, "You haven't been doing it in the past." So you have gotten away with it, so to speak, over so many years, operating as a bar. So now, all of a sudden, someone's calling their bluff, so to speak, and Jerry's going, "Well, you know what? That really, we reinstated it, and it has helped our business." Which I think just kind of furthers our point, that they have been operating as a restaurant during the day, but in the night hours, when they are carding, when there is a queuing line, when the kitchen is closed and condiments are not on the table, they have been operating as a bar. So, you know, our statements really go back to the statement of, you know, "Let's rein in what was originally, what the original intent was, and make it a restaurant." The reason that our group continues to point out the food sales, and I know that the brewery thinks that we're being contrary when we say this, pertaining to the Saturday and Sunday hours of the 1 to 5, the statement that's being made there really goes to a broader use of the fact that we all just want to have a fair playing field. You know, when Kevin Wieda was developing these lofts, he went through the same process that, or a similar process, I should say, that the brewery went through. You know, he had to sit through planning commission, he had to sit through city council, and he had to sit through coastal commission. And we don't understand why the rules and regulations apply to a developer that they don't apply to other businesses. And really, our statement goes to the fairness of, you know, why aren't these being implemented across the board? Why can we turn a blind eye to one operator and give them an unfair advantage that we don't give to other patrons, other developers, or other residents within the community? I mean, we have many testimonies, and Drew Weatherholt is one, where his statement was made, that he was trying to get a parking exemption. And I think the number that Drew spent, and please, you can look back at the minutes, was something like $65,000 to get one parking space granted for his home, because it was a, he utilized all of the lot. So a statement is being made that the brewery is definitely utilizing more parking than what's necessary. So I don't want you to think that we're being arbitrary and trying to unfairly disadvantage the brewery by that statement. The heckling, the intimidation, it's very clear. And when it occurs, it is nine times out of 10, the patrons, as Billy State said one evening, "We walked past Rudy's after a planning commission." And granted, the restaurant was empty, and I can't say that it was made by that particular individual. There were very few patrons within the restaurant at Rudy's or bar, whatever you want to classify Rudy's as. One of which was one of their managers, and literally, the statement was made, you know, "You should pay attention, you live next to a bar." When the operating or management of the bar or the restaurant is calling themselves a bar, shouldn't we kind of take a cue to that? When the patrons heckle us as neighbors, usually, it comes out as, "Well, you shouldn't have moved next to a bar." So once again, it's reinstated, it's stated by not only, you know, our concerns, but by the patrons themselves.
Ms. Low, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, sing non. We'll close the public comment section. The applicant did ask, well, I'm sorry, the appellant, well, actually, the applicant, or appellant, in this case. Well, I have, it wasn't an applicant. Mr. Low did ask for a few more minutes, a couple minutes. So I'll give you that quickly, and then we'll hear from you.
Well, you know, in summary, I think it's safe to say that it's not just me. There are a lot of people in the neighborhood that have got issues with this establishment. And, you know, there are a lot more in the room, you know, that didn't come up here to rehash, you know, and tell you more about the same stories. But, you know, I know there are several others in the room that feel exactly the same way. You know, we're here, after a lot of work, to ask you to restore our neighborhood to a reasonable and fair and even keel. And, you know, the attorney, Mr. Miles, speaks about the police department. You know, he's going to hang his hat on these five times that the police department went out there, they didn't find anything. You know, he doesn't tell you that code enforcement went out there three times. And code enforcement found, in a very objectional situation, one of the three times that they went out there, and all times that they went there were before 10 o'clock at night. Now, if you take a look at the numbers, what that means, if you use his numbers, is that 12.5% of the time, you're going to find an objectionable condition in the brewery, brewery parking lot. And that's not acceptable. And if you take a look at the way it was measured in snapshots, you know, if we sent a policeman down to Jamboree and the Coast Highway and said, "Is anybody running a red light?" You know, if he goes down there five times, you know, how many times is he going to see somebody running a red light? The circumstances are that the objectional behavior occurs. You call the police. It takes the police five, 15 minutes, one hour to get out there, and they come out and they say, "Well, we didn't see it." How long will these objectional behavior last? They're 30 seconds at a time. You know, when's the last time that you saw a fight in a parking lot last for an hour? Doesn't happen. So the information that the police department pushed forward, as good as they are, and as hard as they try to make things right, is never going to produce a result, because the objectionable behavior lasts for such short periods of time. They see the police and they disperse. But the brewery wants to hang their hat on the police report and code enforcement coming down to take a snapshot. Did you find anything wrong? You've got a room full of people that are telling you that it still persists, and we still need change. And we're here tonight to effectuate that change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Low. Robin, what's the, is there a procedure as far as who can, rebuttals and applicant, you know?
I think if you just give the representative for the brew pub the right to make some final comments, and then that would be enough.
Great. So you have another three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a kind of procedural oversight, I would like to, and I know that these documents are already entered into the record, but I would like to lodge four documents, and I've provided 10 copies of each. They are the January 3, 2007 email from myself to Mr. Low, a March 27, 2007, that's today, email to Mr. James Campbell. There is a January 4 memorandum that was prepared for the planning commission that you all received. And there is a March 6, 2007 correspondence to the city council members with respect to this hearing today. And with that, I just wanted to address, there's kind of like, let's compare and contrast coastal development permits. Well, the coastal development permits applicable to the brewing company are very different than what Mr. Wieda had to comply with. We've pointed out the very special conditions that govern how to interpret those conditions in the coastal development permit and who rightfully gets to interpret those. So the enforcement is there, it's for the Coastal Commission to take that up. There is some conjecture about the brewing company being intimidating and threatening. Well, I think you all heard Mr. Wieda today, more or less, say that they're going to take this to the California Coastal Commission. That's a threat. That's Mr. Wieda continuing to interfere with the business at Newport Beach Brewing Company. We have submitted a declaration signed by Mr. Irving Chase that confirms that Mr. Wieda has a financial interest in acquiring this property. My client, S&amp;A Properties, Ellet Fierstein and Alan Feinberg, previously owned the Canary Village Loft property and sold that property to Mr. Wieda. They, on several occasions, have denied Mr. Wieda's efforts to acquire the parcel where Newport Beach Brewing Company exists. So I just would like to point that out and note that, with respect to the standards here, if you look at Goat Hill Tavern, take a look at what evidence was submitted in that case, because it was far more strenuous than what we're dealing with today. It really is conjecture. I mean, I don't think that there's any doubt that the brewing company is open book. Come down there, investigate your hearts out. I don't think code enforcement ever found anything that amounted to something actionable. Maybe let's start talking about the standards that are applicable here, if truly this body wants to look at substantially changing or even revoking a use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sure, go ahead. Sir?
Got a couple of questions here. At what time do you start carting?
Again, the policy tends to be after 10:00 PM, but I want, actually, I'm glad you raised the question because the policy, if the Planning Commission didn't try to implement their own policy to tell the brewing company how they go about doing their business, it's not a hard, fast rule that a minor cannot enter the business. And in fact, as the condition is drafted now, it is acceptable. However, we just want to point out that it does add to the enforcement problems trying to curtail underage drinking. The point being is that there are instances, it could be after 10:00 PM. It has a lot to do with whether tables are available. If a family is in and they have their minor with them, and there's a table where they can be sat, they will be admitted entry into the establishment. It's not, again, it's a policy, it's a judgment call for security, but overwhelmingly, after 10:00 PM, when it's crowded, when there are not tables available, and it would be a circumstance where that minor could go about and possibly solicit a alcoholic beverage, that's when they're, that's the time when they are not permitted to enter. It's not a hard, fast rule. It's because, it will become a hard, fast rule with the Planning Commission's supplemented policy, so.
So that's agreeable to you, the Planning Commission's, is that a condition, Robin? I don't recall.
Condition twenty-six.
Condition twenty-six.
It is condition twenty-six. And we did, it was somewhat negotiated at the podium, but I do believe that the language as crafted does provide enough discretion still for security so that it was acceptable to the brewing company. Again, because it's kind of in line with what they were doing already. It's just, they didn't have a specific policy, I mean, in the conditions, and now we do. It's the way a lot of these things are, there's a statement about, you know, the menu. There's no condition that says that it's full meal service. A menu for breakfast, lunch, and dinner could be a full menu. It's, you know, it's like, these things the brewing company has agreed to do, they've agreed to keep their kitchen open for all hours of operation and to continue the full menu, but it has nothing really to do with the conditions. I mean, the critical point is that food sales are in excess of alcohol sales.
Okay, well, I was interested in the carting, not the rest of that. Guess I'm going to tip my hand here a little bit, but if you're given the choice of going back to beer sales only or limiting the hours to eleven o'clock on Friday and Saturday night, which one would you take?
That was just hard liquor?
I believe it would.
Eliminating the hard liquor?
No, I don't believe either one would be acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, it's kind of like a replay of about ten or eleven years ago with the cannery, the old cannery, Blue Water Grill, Snug Harbor. Pardon me? Malarkies, same type of thing. And one of the things that happened is, once the cannery closed down, changed their method of operation, Snug Harbor went away, Blue Water Grill, we put conditions on how they operated, and we haven't had any complaints. And it really gets down to, you know, how the business is being operated, I think. And when we approved on the Planning Commission the addition of hard liquor sales to this operation, we did it, as the city attorney said, with the primary intent of helping out the restaurant business, of providing a wider variety of alcoholic beverages to serve with dinner. Representations were made to us by the brew company that their intent was to expand dinner service to provide late-night dining opportunities that were not available on the peninsula. And it seems to me that that has not transpired. Now, the attorney for the Brew Co. has said that the evidence is not there in the police report to support the fact that it's not operating as a restaurant and it's operating as a bar. And I don't necessarily dispute that part of it, but I think the thing that convinces me is the fact that if they're carting people to get in, I mean, after ten o'clock, after ten o'clock, it's operating as a bar. I mean, just common sense tells you it's a bar and it's not a restaurant. And so I think, I'm not sure which is the way to go. We didn't have a problem with it before we had hard alcohol sales here. We obviously have a problem now. And, you know, so I would, you know, I would look at either going back to just having the, you know, the beer sales, eliminating the hard liquor, or limiting the hours of operation. And just kind of like to hear what some of the other council members think about that.
Councilman Hen?
Yeah, I would, I'd like to make a couple of comments, and then I'd like to make a motion for us to get something on the table to specifically consider. I do applaud the efforts of the Brew Co. to make changes in their operation. They certainly have made changes. I'm another alumnus of the Planning Commission where this issue was considered. I attended two meetings on the Planning Commission, did not attend the third meeting at which the Planning Commission made its decision. But it was clear to me at the time, from the meetings that I attended, that the Brew Co. did only really begin to seriously consider making changes when it became clear from the Planning Commission discussion that they were in danger of severe consequences. And so it was between the second and third meeting, really, when the serious discussions took place about changing their method of operation. And so my impression is that they were sort of pulled into this process as opposed to being, starting out with a good neighborly policy to make things better. In addition to that, it's very clear to me that the fifteen-hundred-square-foot limitation was intended from the start and all the way through to be a seven-day requirement. I can't even imagine how the Coastal Commission would have said, "No, it's only a five-day requirement," when the principal issue about beach access occurs on Saturdays and Sundays on the peninsula. I do live on the peninsula. I am sympathetic to the statements that have been made about the problems and abuses. I do believe, though, that we can't hang all of that at the door of Newport Brewing Company. There are a number of establishments that allow people to more than likely drink more than they should and result in rowdy behavior down there. I guess where I come out is that I want to give the brewing company a better chance to be a good neighbor than the Planning Commission did. And so I move that we approve the conditions of approval established by the Planning Commission with the following changes. First, that we amend condition number nineteen to prohibit the use of the parking lot entrance by no later than nine PM. That apparently is something that would be acceptable to the brewing company, but I want to make it a matter of record in the conditions of approval. Second, that we amend condition number twenty-two to require, as a part of the security plan, that the, that a full-time security person be in the parking lot beginning at ten PM every night until a half hour after closing. Third, that condition number six, having to do with the fifteen-hundred-square-foot limitation, be made clear that it applies seven days a week and not five. And fourth, that in order to help the brewing company get back to the original, although I wasn't on the commission in nineteen ninety-nine, it's pretty clear from the review of the record and from Councilman Selich's comments, that I want to help them get back to their originally contemplated mission here, which was to be a good restaurant that is able to serve hard liquor, but would like to amend it to be that they may not serve hard liquor after ten PM nightly. And so that's my motion.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Would you accept a change of, making, a change to condition seven of instead of stopping the sale of liquor, but just closing at eleven on Friday and Saturday?
You know, I'm trying to be even-handed about this in view of the fact that it is an operating business. And when it's operating as a restaurant, I think it's a valuable and appreciated business on the peninsula. And it's not my purpose to drive this business out of business. I'd be curious what the rest of the council's view is of that specific point.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Diggle?
I think that, you know, first issue came before us, that the establishment, you know, was there before the residents, but it raised the question of, how is the, what are the characteristics of the establishment? How is it operating? And it's pretty clear that, you know, between that eleven PM and one AM timeframe, it's losing the, you know, the restaurant element of it. So as far as your motion, I would support that. I think you've hit on the key issues.
Thank you. Councilman Curry?
As it relates to condition twenty-six on carting, I know that the issue of carting is being used as a differentiation between a restaurant and a bar, but families really don't take their children out to eat after ten o'clock. I actually do believe that the restaurant's policy of carting after ten PM is appropriate public policy. And I would, would you be amenable to giving the restaurant discretion as to its carting policy so they can better effectuate compliance with the ABC laws?
In the context of the remaining parts of my motion, yes.
Anyone else?
I just have a couple of comments here. You know, this is a tough one because this business has been operating a long time, but obviously, we have a number of residents that are concerned. Just kind of going through it a little bit, point by point, analyzing the issue about condition number six with regard to the fifteen-hundred square feet, whether it just applies Monday to Friday or the entire week. You know, I've looked through this entire record. I can't determine one way or another. I mean, clearly, the Coastal Commission, that's what, they said seven days a week. I have no doubt of that. But clearly, the council and subsequent councils have passed judgment on these or looked at these conditions and have changed them, changed the use of the thing, of the brew pub, but they never changed that. And so, you know, I don't know that we need to go there. Certainly, the residents have an avenue to address that concern through the Coastal Commission because it is their requirement. You know, it's not a matter of this has been six months, and this was an oops, and we found it, you know, six months later. I mean, we're talking about thirteen years after this thing was done. And I think Mr. Low himself said that, you know, that this operation is fine during the day. I think, and from what I'm hearing from most of these people, it's the nighttime. It's the late nighttime when the problem arises. And so, you know, I don't know if that was just something else to, you know, make the argument that much stronger, but personally, I think we should just rely on the Coastal Commission here to enforce that condition if that's what they choose to do. And certainly, the brew company, if they want to prepare a traffic survey, and when it does get to Coastal Commission and prove that they aren't a burden and convince the Coastal Commission to change their condition, fine. And if they can't, then the Coastal Commission is going to enforce that on them. And I have full confidence that the residents will take it to the Coastal Commission. As far as the issue with the restaurant versus a bar versus a brew pub, you know, I think clearly the brew pub has demonstrated that they have been operating as a bar at a certain hour at night. And so, you know, I would be in favor of limiting the hard liquor sales, as Councilman Selich mentioned earlier, past eleven o'clock on Friday and Saturday. If they want, if they can succeed as a restaurant during those hours, which is, I think, what they were intended to do, selling beer, which that still allows them to sell beer, which I think was supposedly the primary focus of this operation when they set it up, then I think that that would be appropriate. Certainly, you know, we can come back and look at this six months from now and see if that seems to have solved the problem or if the problem just is an operational thing from an hour standpoint that it just needs to be cut off at eleven o'clock. But, so, you know, again, I don't know if you'd consider amending your motion again, but I think that it really is a Coastal Commission issue as far as the Friday-Saturday limitation. But I do think that we should limit the hard liquor sales from, on Friday and Saturday, after eleven o'clock, to just beer only.
To clarify, my motion was to limit hard liquor sales after ten PM. Are you suggesting that be changed too, or is it ten PM?
Well, I think they're open during the week, six AM to eleven PM. I think that's the hours that they've had, and I think most of the people who've spoken tonight have asked for after eleven, that it should be closed, or certainly, it seems like that's the magic hour for, but most of the people talked about. So I would say eleven o'clock is when they have to cut off the hard liquor sales.
I guess my view was to provide a little cooling-off period before closing.
Well, maybe it's better if they stop drinking and cool off there as opposed to leaving the place.
I don't know how realistic that is.
What were your hours again in your motion?
To cut off hard liquor sales after ten PM every day. Now then, with regard to the Coastal Commission thing, it's just abundantly clear to me that an error was made. There's nothing in the record that the council intended to take a different position on that use permit from what the Coastal Commission approved. Nobody suggested there ever has been. Maybe Councilman Selich can put some clarity around that, I'm not sure. But it's just clear to me, an error was made. And I don't regard the perpetuation of an error just because it's been in existence for some time to be a reason to continue it. And so I do think we should make that limitation consistent with Coastal Commission requirement. I think it's probably also, from a greater perspective, good practice for the city to be demonstrating that it is cognizant and carrying out its responsibilities regarding Coastal Commission mandates.
I'll second your motion. I don't think there's been a second.
Mike's motion? I don't.
You might want to see if it's going to evolve here.
Evolve a little bit more, but, Councilman Selich?
Yeah, well, in regard to the Coastal Commission, that never came up in nineteen ninety-nine. That wasn't an issue. And I support Mayor Rosansky's position on condition six. And I would support your motion, but I'd like to see six eliminated. I think it's, you know, it's something that helps the restaurant out in early hours, and that's when they need the help, they need the help in early hours to be able to have more area to serve food. And if the Coastal Commission wants to come back and enforce that, let them go hash it out with the Coastal Commission and try and get their position improved. But for us to get more onerous in that, into the hours of operation, I think kind of defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do and help them succeed as a restaurant and not encourage them to be a bar. So I would support eliminating condition number six.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Webb?
I think that we need to look at it from the standpoint of seven days versus five days. I think that the reason why that the city put in there between, over the Monday through Friday was that we have office uses up and down the street, and we wanted to make sure that the parking wasn't exceeded that. On Saturdays and Sundays, there's not a substantial amount of retail use in that area, and you have a lot less people occupying the buildings during Saturday and Sunday. And that's why I think it would be good to follow the recommendation that is set aside to where at least there'd be a parking study through the summer to see if there really is a parking problem created by the brew pub on the Saturdays and Sundays. Because I don't feel that seven days a week is reasonable unless it can be shown that during nine months out of the year, there's a problem on Saturday and Sunday. If we were going to restrict it to seven days a week, I think that perhaps that should be done in a timeframe when there might potentially be a problem on Saturdays and Sundays, which would be the summer months. But I think that, I'd like to see us go through with the parking study to actually show whether or not it is a problem.
When I spoke earlier with staff today, they thought that the parking study, you know, that would be the appropriate way to treat that and get some more facts. That's kind of how they looked at it. That's kind of how they looked at it.
But my concern is that it's in error the way it is. And if there's to be a parking study, it should be in the context of the applicant executing the original coastal commission mandate, and if they feel that's inappropriate and they can demonstrate that it's not necessary, then they can do a parking study and go to the coastal commission to get a change in that condition, rather than the other way around.
You know, I would tend to agree with you, except for the fact that they have been operating that way for 13 years. It'd be one thing if they were going in there and saying, "Hey, we want to do this," and you could say, "Okay, well, you got to upfront say, you know, get the traffic survey to prove that you can do it." But to the extent that they have been operating that way, and although you said that the record is clear, I, I mean, if the record was clear, I, I think I would have seen it as well. I think it's clear the coastal commission said it, but I don't know that it's clear that our city council said it at the time, or subsequent councils or subsequent planning commissions. I mean, certainly, that condition's been there in black and white. Now, no one may have highlighted it. I don't know why that is. But, you know, again, I think it's not like we're the last quarter resort, or whatever you want to call it here. They do have opportunity to go back to the coastal commission to get them to enforce their, their condition, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I guess in continuing my efforts to help this business survive as a restaurant and not a bar, thinking about the, the difference between the hours of cutting off hard liquor between your proposal and Mayor Rosansky's, I think that going to 11:00 makes a lot of sense because that's kind of the standard that the other restaurants in the area have. And so we want to keep the, this place as competitive with the other ones. So I think I would tend to lean more towards 11:00 o'clock for cutting off the liquor rather than 10:00, just to keep it in a competitive position.
Okay, we have a motion. I think you seconded it. Do I hear an alternative motion? Well, I'd like to amend my motion to say 11:00 p.m. on the cutoff of hard liquor sales. I think Councilmember Selich's argument just now is appropriate.
And condition six, though, you're...
I still'd like to keep condition six.
Okay.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that's the same as Councilman Hen's, with the exception that condition six be deleted.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
And Nancy, I'm assuming you're seconding Mike's motion, so, okay. So we have a motion and an alternative motion. Councilman Dagel?
Well, I think we can all agree that 11:00 p.m. shutting down the hard liquor, everyone agrees on that one. So that's good.
Okay.
Even though it might come up 4-3, you want to point that out.
Councilman Curry?
Well, I want to give great discretion to Councilman Hen, who represents the area and I think has been working very hard to address the neighborhood concerns. And I think his overall package is going to go a great way towards meeting many of the issues that we heard discussed today by being able to deal with the hard liquor issue going into the evening. But I do agree with Mayor Rosansky and with Councilmember Selich that in order to make this restaurant have greater opportunity to succeed as a restaurant, opening up that small area, and I've been in there, it's a table and chairs area where people would go to eat, would be consistent with that. And so I would support the substitute motion for point six only, or for point six that's on the table.
Point six on the hours.
Point six on the hours. But with your substitution...
Well, I guess we're both, all in agreement on the hours now.
His whole package was my thing on the carding, except we're taking out six.
Correct. Okay.
If, if we totally eliminate six, does that eliminate the previous conditions where we were looking at the prior to 5:00 p.m. on a Monday through Friday? Do you really want to completely eliminate it, or do you want to perhaps leave it in place?
I, I think what you want to do is not amend six. I think you want to...
Is that what it was?
I think your intention at it is to leave it in place. It says Monday through Friday for the limitation.
Yes, you're, you're correct. You're correct. I apologize.
Leave condition six.
Leave condition six.
Thank you for that correction, Councilman Webb.
Thanks for correcting me.
All right, is there anybody else that would like to comment on this? Okay, we have a motion and an alternative motion. By our rules, we'll vote on the alternative motion first.
With Councilmembers Hen, Dagel, and Gardner voting no, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda is public comments.
Do we not need to vote on the original motion? We were just voting on the alternative.
No.
Is that...
That covers it. If we've approved the alternative motion, that supersedes the original motion.
Mr. Mayor, it may be good for the audience because I see people wondering exactly what we just did and maybe go through these again, so that everybody knows the, the package that we, we just voted on.
Okay. I think basically what we agreed to do is to leave the hours of operation intact. However, on Friday and Saturday evening, they need to cease hard liquor sales at 11:00 o'clock. They are still allowed to sell beer and, I imagine, wine as well, but any hard liquor sales are, are prevented after 11:00 o'clock on Friday and Saturday. We've, we've agreed that we're not going to change condition number six, which will still allow them to have full use of the restaurant on Saturday and Sunday, but not Monday through Friday, where they'll be limited only 1,500 square feet prior to 5:00 p.m. And we've also...
Eliminate condition 26.
Eliminate condition 26.
Full-time security on 22.
And, and full-time security, well, not full-time, I think it was after 10:00 o'clock? Yeah, 10:00 o'clock.
And then on 19, that...
Well, it's 10:00 o'clock till one half hour from, after closing.
Okay, but then item 19 was that they couldn't enter through the back door after 9:00 o'clock.
Exactly, after 9:00 o'clock. Yeah, they need to queue from the front.
Seven days a week?
Seven days a week.
Can I ask you something?
Okay. You know what? We, we, I guess you'd, the answer's seven days a week, they have to queue from the front. Okay?
David, applicant, are we operating discretion on carding?
Yes, we did give, we did give them discretion on carding. Okay, moving right along, we're moving to our public comments section. Madam Clerk? It's a little early for that.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Anybody who'd like to comment on a non-agenda item?
My name is Ken Coleman. I'm from West Newport Beach, 39th Street, and I'd just like to make one statement in it, in its regards to the people that have been here since November 6th. I'd like to let the city council know that we've been here since November 2006, it's always the same people here in regards to rehab houses, sober living and drug rehabilitation facilities. Since CBS Channel 2 filming was here and they interviewed some of the local people and the rehab houses, we've had a, it's, all of the interest in West Newport Beach has just multiplied, the awareness of the Newport residents, of the oversaturation of rehab facilities since the showing on TV. Protect Our Potentia Group has received hundreds of calls and emails to support the moratorium and also wanting to know how they can support our group and the residential occupancy committee. We are concerned residents of West Newport Beach will be sending a newsletter and an email message to all concerned Newport Beach residents to attend the April 10th city council meeting to show the numbers of people concerned with saturation of rehabilitation facilities in West Newport Beach. And that's all I have to say. Just to make you aware that we are going to have a lot of people here at the next meeting, April 10th.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Jim Miller. I was asked by the West Newport Beach Association to be their representative on the newly, new city IROC committee. I was getting, we were getting a large volume of complaints about the proliferation and over-concentration of rehab facilities in our community. This map that the city provides shows the over-concentration of rehab facilities in our community. We have 10 grouped around Newport Elementary School. I'm sure everybody's seen that. We have four beginning at Toledo Isle, and then we have about 70 to 80 in a small area around seashore and river. At our first meeting with the city, the residents felt that SB 1,000, as currently worded, may make the matter even worse. It would legitimize drug rehab homes next to every one of our residences, as long as they have different operators. This was not the legislative intent when they wrote Proposition 36 and other drug rehab bills. Courts and probation department know full well that most addicts go back to their, go back to using. Drug courts try to get addicts away from concentrations of other addicts because so many reoffend. Overconcentration hurts our communities and harms the chances for those addicts to succeed. We propose language similar to Florida's drug rehabilitation overcrowding statute. FS Section 4, 19.001, 2 provides, "Homes of six or fewer residents which otherwise meet the definition of community residential home shall be allowed in single-family or multifamily zoning without approval by the local government, provided that such homes shall not be located within a radius of 1,000 feet of existing, of another existing such home with six or fewer residents." And that's what we're proposing.
Jim, that, you know, we're covering that as agenda item a little bit later. This is non-agenda items.
Ah, I'm so sorry.
All right. I was going to give you some latitude there, but once you start talking about the 1,000 feet and all that, we're going to cover that on item number 19.
I jumped the gun.
Yeah. Okay.
My wife tells me that all the time.
But I'm only going to give you a minute then to talk, since you used two minutes.
No, that's okay. That's okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I only need a minute more.
Okay.
Thanks, Stephen.
Anyone else that wants to comment on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public comments section. Any oral reports from council members on committee activities? Okay?
I just have a quick one. General Plan Implementation Committee tomorrow afternoon, 3:30 here.
Exciting stuff.
Exciting stuff.
Okay, we're going to listen to the Planning Commission Agenda and Oral Report status, and then we're going to take a very short break, five minutes, and then we're going to go into item number 17.
Mayor Rosansky, Members of Council, David Leppo, Planning Director. Last Planning Commission meeting, we had an item for 709 Kings Road, the Weeks' residents. It was a request for a variance to exceed the height limit by six inches. The item was continued indefinitely because the Weeks are trying to redesign their new dwellings so they don't have to have a variance to the height limitation. Next, Eddie V's Wildfish Restaurant, 1370 Bison Avenue. This was a, an annual update or an annual review of their parking plan. The restaurant has a use permit, it was granted, oh, I think, the end of 2005. There were some concerns that the parking wasn't adequate, so they set up a parking plan. Review was to be one year after the use permit was issued. The Irvine Company and the tenant couldn't reach agreement on the terms of the parking plan. After a lot of debate, the Planning Commission decided that really it was between the tenant and the Irvine Company to come up with something that works, so they passed a resolution directing staff to work out the details with the Irvine Company and the tenant and monitor it for compliance. So that was that. Lastly, the Wine Gallery, 2411 East Coast Highway in Corona del Mar, was requested to expand the existing winery at about 1,400 square feet and includes wine tasting. There was some concern because they'd been using the basement, which didn't have the adequate egress required by fire company, so condition was approved to absolutely limit, eliminate use of the basement, but the application for expanding the use permit for the premises was approved. Planning Commission also received a report that was previously presented to the city council on the parking inlet fees. And lastly, they received another nice presentation from Mr. Dan Campaniolo on GIS applications available to the planning commissioners. Questions, sir, ma'am?
Questions, anyone? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break. Please limit it to five minutes because we have a lot of people waiting here for some of these following agenda items. Thank you. Thank you.[259.85]
Under those circumstances, I only raise for the council the fact that that was a potential that a lawsuit could be brought based upon that, an alleged violation. So, that is the context for which the council is determining whether to rescind their decision tonight, and that would be the only basis for that determination, depending upon which way the council chooses to act.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions of city attorney? Okay, so no questions, I'll open it up for public comment. We have, what, five minutes for our comments? Five minutes for comments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Deborah Allen, the person who has been charged with this alleged conflict of interest. I want to point out a couple of things, and forgive me if I get a little emotional because I'm very disappointed by the way this whole thing has been handled. First of all, your staff report, both the written one and the one that the city attorney just gave, implies that I should not have participated in, or should not be participating in, a city council decision on the park, and particularly the city council meeting of February 27th. That is absolutely not correct. Assistant City Attorney Erin Harp told me at 3:00 PM on the day of your last council meeting, the 27th of February, that some person he would not name had charged that I had a conflict of interest on Newport Center Park. I asked Attorney Harp if that meant I should not speak at the council meeting that evening. He said he could not tell me, but he gave me the telephone number of the Fair Political Practices Commission. Because that was a matter that had not yet been voted on, and I had not yet participated, I was able to call them and discuss the matter, and they gave me unequivocal permission to speak. The law that they cited was because the PBNR Commission on which I sit does not have any control over the city council. The control goes the other way, and there's a specific provision in the Fair Political Practices Act that allows me as a PBNR commissioner, whether I had a conflict or not, to speak to the council on a matter that was before the council. So I think it's important that you know that. And furthermore, you should also know that before I ever spoke, I told Attorney Harp at that meeting that I had talked to the PPC and what they had told me. And he said, yes, he agreed with that. So I'm kind of disturbed that it is still coming up now that I should not be participating in a decision that you are making on this issue, because that's absolutely not correct, and I already have a ruling on that. Now, as to the anonymous person's charge that I had a conflict of interest in the decisions I made on the parks commission, you, the city, have left the impression that I had a conflict of interest. I'm not going to go into the particular quotes in the newspaper by the city attorney, but there is one, and it doesn't say anything about potential conflict of interest. It actually says Commissioner Allen had a conflict of interest, or words to that effect. It gave that impression. The impression from that press release was clearly very heated and gave people the idea that there was a conflict of interest. I suspect many people here tonight, who are here on the side of the city hall, may in fact comment that I had a conflict of interest. I want to read to you from something I received from Assistant City Attorney Harp. The standard is as follows. For directly involved real property, the applicable standard is there's a presumption of materiality where a particular piece of property is within 500 feet of the governmental decision. Barry will discuss with you, and you already have the packet, about whether or not I'm actually 500 feet away. But nevertheless, this presumption may be rebutted by proof that it is not reasonably foreseeable that the governmental decision will have any financial effect on the real property. In other words, the presumption is rebuttable, can be overcome, if in fact, the governmental decision, i.e. what the parks commission did, does not have any effect on my real property. You have before you a certified appraisal that I had done as a result of these accusations that proves that nothing that can be built in Newport Center Park will have any effect on my property value at all, whether you build a passive park, whether you build an active park, or two different proposals for city hall located on that site. The appraiser, whose credentials are impeccable, concluded that none of those has any impact on my property value whatsoever. And you have, of course, the whole appraisal and the explanation of why not, because my property is oriented the other direction. I have no conflict of interest. But what really disturbs me is you should have heard my side of the story before you put out that press release that has irreparably damaged my reputation in this community. And I'm very disappointed that you never gave me a chance to at least express my point of view before you put out that press release. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Barry Allen. The way I'm reading the press release by the city attorney and the staff report by the city attorney is someone maybe, possibly considering a lawsuit. You have had the opportunity to read the memorandums and appraisals that I supplied to you. You have received from me four separate documents. They are the declaration of the appraiser, a discussion of the city's GIS diagram, a claim that Commissioner Allen has a conflict of interest, and that Commissioner Allen is not a public official for purposes of park design. With limited time, I could not read all that tonight, and I thought it best to give it to you in advance so that you could read it and review it before tonight's hearing. However, I want to spend some of my time discussing those memorandums. I submitted an appraisal in response to these charges that concluded that none of the proposals, whether it was a park, city hall, whatever it was, would have any effect upon the commissioner's property. Mainly, that was because it wasn't in the commissioner's viewpoint. And the appraiser who did this is the appraiser who testifies and regularly, regularly gets involved in appraisals on view property in the city of Newport Beach. That's why I used him, is because that's what he does. He's done it for 30 years. I have seen no appraisal, no appraisal have I seen, been told about, that contradicts anything said in the appraisal I supplied to you. On the city's measurement of 500 feet from Commissioner Allen's home, you were told by the city attorney it was 375 feet. The evidence shows it's at least 480 feet to the corner of the library. Now, the corner of the library isn't park. The distance to the park is 594 feet. I have seen no professional survey that challenges the one that I have, that I discussed in documents forwarded to you by mail. I have here tonight the declaration of the engineer that conducted the survey, if anybody wants to see it, because I didn't have it at the time that I wrote the memorandums to you. I have not heard or read any analysis, the challenges, the law, or the facts that I have stated in the memos that I have sent to you. What we have against all the information supplied at this point is an inquiry, an inquiry, and a contested GIS finding. That's it. That's all you have to make your decision on. If there were law or facts to prove that what I have said and written is untrue on all the conflict issues discussed in these memorandums, then let's hear them before we cut and run and rescind a very much debated decision of this city council that had only done a month ago. If you want to give me some more time, I will stand here and read all three of the legal memos that I sent to you, and the sworn declaration of the appraiser, and the sworn declaration of the engineer with regard to the survey. That way, the good people of Newport Beach, here and watching on TV, will know that any lawsuit threat is a paper tiger. Even if there is a lawsuit, it would be frivolous. I don't think we can run from it when the law and facts are clear, there's no conflict of interest in any case. Until this person goes public with what it is that wins a lawsuit, not just files a lawsuit, but wins a lawsuit, wins an injunction, does something, the sources should really be ignored. I mean, we just can't look at some source that you have who says maybe, possibly, I might be complaining about this. In conclusion, I'll state the obvious. This is not about a conflict of interest of a parks commissioner or of anybody on the parks commission. It's nothing but an attempt by people who want city hall on this site to rehear the whole thing again and try and change the vote from a park to becoming a city hall. You now have the facts, not some interpretation of the facts. You now have the law that's applicable to the conflict of interest, and you know there isn't any conflict of interest under the law. I therefore request that you vote against the agenda item to once more reconsider the park. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Elaine Lindhoff. I live in Balboa. And I was a little upset when I read Tom Johnson's article. At least, he signed his name to it. But it was just awfully cute of him in his Daily Pilot article to nickname the Central Park, Newport Central Park, the Deborah Allen Park. But that's really inaccurate. As a member of SPON, I've been involved in this piece of property since it was designated open space by the COCO agreement that allowed more development by the Irvine Company. If Mr. Johnson wanted to rename the park, he should have renamed it the Jean Watt Park. She was very instrumental in getting this piece of property designated as open space. Or he could have renamed it the Jan Van der Sloot Park, because Jan has worked very hard to preserve this as open space. And SPON worked hard to get the senior citizen housing put over on Jamboree and not on this piece of property, to save it for a park. This park needs to be developed soon, because there are so many powerful people in this city that think that every open piece of land should have a building on it. But I feel that as Orange County becomes more and more urbanized, that every little piece of land becomes more precious, every little piece of open space. And this piece of property has spectacular views, and it should be kept for everyone to enjoy in perpetuity. We need parking and paths so that the public can access this park. People drive by and they say it's just a weed patch and nobody's ever uses it. Well, that's because not too many people want to climb that hill and get there, and there's no place to park. You can't park on Avocado, the library parking is for the library, and so on. So it needs to be developed, and it needs to be developed soon. There are other sites for city hall. There is no other site like this comparable for a park. So please stand by your vote to develop the park. To change your mind because of an accusation of possible conflict of interest is not a reason, it's an excuse.
Mayor Rosansky, council members and staff. My name is Wendy Brooks, and I'm a resident of Newport Beach. I'm here this evening to plead once again for you to consider having our new city hall and Newport Center Park next to the library. Why can't we accommodate everyone by compromising and sharing? It is the ideal centrally located spot. There's plenty of room for both, and there will never be an opportunity like this again. With the city hall adjacent to the library, we could, like other sophisticated cities, have an actual civic center incorporating a much-needed civic auditorium. There are many more points to make, but too little time to elaborate, so I will merely touch upon them. There is already an excess of passive park acreage in this area while other sections of the city go wanting. A park should have easy access, but in order to get to this one, people would have to cross not only one, but possibly two major thoroughfares. If they choose to drive there, where will they park? To my recollection, there isn't even a restroom planned, which would force parkgoers to use the library's facilities. Many things have changed since this issue was first voted on a number of years ago. Now it's time to think about what would best serve the needs of the most citizens in our community. We've wasted years and countless dollars appointing committees to search for venue options while building costs continue to rise. The answer was right there under our noses all the time. We need look no further. Park Plus is the perfect solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Yeah, I'll cover that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Shirley Conger, and I live in Old Corona Del Mar.
Shirley, before you start, could I just make a quick comment? The issue before us tonight is whether or not the city council needs to rescind their decision approving or moving forward with the park. So if we can try and limit our comments to that, because that is the agenda item. Thank you.
Yes. I read the article in the Daily Pilot by Mr. Johnson, and my first impression of this article, this is last Friday, my first impression was that this was a political smear job, that this has become a political issue, and that the things he said were obviously exaggerated and false. This isn't Deborah Allen's park. There's a large group of people interested in the park. And yet, Deborah Allen has been a leader in the community, not only in this, for many years and other issues too. But there's no question that the view, her view is not affected by the development of a city hall or a park. There's no question that her neighborhood is so close to this park. This is ridiculous. Her neighborhood is a residential area completely separated by MacArthur Boulevard. These were just exaggerations used for political purposes, and I accepted that. But then I found out very recently that the trigger for this announcement, or this letter in the paper, was a press release from the city attorney. And I felt that it was handled wrong, that this could easily have been handled in a meeting beforehand, but that this in itself was part of a political process, of people who were opposed to the park and wanted the city hall, and throwing some extra information or misinformation into the pot to divert people's attention and really to smear Mrs. Allen too. So I really objected to the way it was handled, and I hope you come to a fair conclusion tonight and support your previous decision. There is no conflict of interest here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conger.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Alan Beek. First, I want to thank you for clarifying that the issue before us is not the park or city hall question, it's the question of the propriety of the vote and should it be rescinded. Secondly, I want to point out that I realize you were not responsible for what the Daily Pilot does, and I don't hold you responsible. And third, to the issue itself, I was rather expecting that the staff would recommend the item be removed from the agenda, because the question was one of Mrs. Allen's possible conflict of interest, and it's been established that she does not live within 500 feet of the parcel, and that even if she did live within 500 feet, the parcel and what's done there would not affect her property value. So the question is disposed of, and it really shouldn't even be before you at all. And finally, even if she had voted the other way, it would not have changed what the council did. The decision was made by the council, not by the Parks and Recreation Commission. So I would like to suggest that either the item be removed from the agenda altogether or that you vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beek.
Good evening. My name is Tom Molson from Corona Del Mar. And Deborah Allen has indeed been engaged in a conflict of interest for a very long time. She's a lawyer, yet throughout her professional life, she's devoted literally not hundreds, but thousands of unbilled hours to public service and community causes at the expense of a private practice and a private life. This strikes me as a pretty serious conflict of interest. It's not lawyer-like. If they're all like that, we wouldn't have any lawyer jokes. So I'm indebted to Mr. or Mrs. Anonymous, who brought this to our attention, and no less so to our august editor of the Daily Pilot for his article, Tom Johnson, for publicizing it. Mr. Johnson also cast against the majority of this council, the four of you who supported moving forward with the park, with, I have to use his exact words, because they are "the place of the journalistic class of his own." Quote, "they" describing you, "standing on their integrity and the will of the people and the previous commitments," yada, yada, yada. Those are his words, not mine. "They represent true journalistic excellence." So Mr. Johnson's right. We all know that integrity, high principle, and fulfilling promises have no place in government. If we believed that, nobody would run for office, would they? So Deborah Allen is indeed at fault, and so are you, and come to think of it, so is the public, because if we didn't want this park, we wouldn't have the problem in the first place. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen Tringali from Corona Del Mar, and I just want to share with you what I won't be talking about tonight. I'm not going to be talking about how shabbily we treat people who volunteer their time, their energy, and their resources for the benefit of the city and its residents, and especially when their opinions buck the prevailing political winds on various topics and issues. I'm also not going to talk about how much effort, with how little effort it takes to dig up a perceived conflict of interest for any resident of our fair city, especially if a perceived conflict of interest against those that serve us, our council members, our commissioners, our staff members, our city employees, even employees of the Daily Pilot. And let's not forget to mention conflicts of interest when it comes to our benefactors, philanthropists, and other people that contribute goods and services and financial support to a variety of projects throughout the city, people that donate their time and effort to our libraries, our parks, our centennials, our service organizations, and even campaign funds. But what I do want to say tonight is that as a resident of Newport Beach, who lives as the crow flies 1.58 miles from Newport Center Park, I think that equates to about 8,300 feet, I want to assure you that any council member, commissioner, or employee, or volunteer, or philanthropist, or Daily Pilot employee who speaks in support of proceeding with the development of Newport Center Park is certainly not conflicting any interest of mine, nor the residents who packed these council chambers last month for that meeting who supported the passive development of that park. And should we not be proud, and I also will quote the Daily Pilot, for those people that mustered the courage to stand on their integrity and the will of the people and previous commitments, yada, yada, yada? Council members have demonstrated, at least on this issue, that they intend to support their constituents' expressed voice on this matter. And isn't that really the premise of what representative government is? I have no interest in and I will not support a monument to city government erected on a site that was donated to the public and designated as an open park. Be a council of action and integrity, finish the park as promised, and vote on that issue tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tringali.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Bill Ficker, a longtime resident of Newport Beach. I'll be very brief. I hope you will take time to put on hold or rescind the action to plan and develop a part of the subject park that previously had never been seen or contemplated in the many years that PBNR and all of us have been looking at this site. And that's really what we're talking about here tonight. As expressed in our general plan, this is one of the lowest priorities in the city, and even in the facility replacement and planning worksheet that we discussed last Saturday morning at the library. The Newport Center Park timeframe is 2018. In the general plan that is highly endorsed and acknowledged by the city council and many other residents of the city who have thoroughly studied the park needs and requirements, this park is not on any horizon. I hope we could all take a deep breath, and let's work together to see if there are some opportunities that best serve our community for a joint use for a park and public facility. I strongly recommend that you rescind your action of February 27th and March 13th meetings that initiate the process to proceed to develop Phase One parking lot of the Newport Center Park. Such action will give the residents of Newport Beach the confidence that all PBNR actions were conducted legally and without conflict. It'll give you time to look at it and confirm everything we've heard here tonight. In addition, since there is more awareness of greater opportunities that benefit our residents, the public outreach process should be re-initiated to thoroughly provide citizens' evaluation of new and better opportunities at the Avocado Library site. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ficker.
I'm Dick Nichols, Corona Del Mar. I have some comments. I do not happen to be the person that turned in some 500-foot limitation. However, it was used on me. Across the street, I have a place called the Port Theater, and I was restricted from speaking as a participant in the council on that, and I certainly have no monetary feelings in that. I am within the 500-foot limit, and it was a restriction. Whether it was a restriction on Debbie, I don't know. I haven't made no judgment on that. I would like to make a judgment on your reconsideration here, though, and that is, we just had a look at the budget, and the budget said, at this point, which is not complete, we have $5 million available for a capital outlay. That's far less than we spent last year, $20 million. It indicates that the only way we're going to have this vast capital outlays that we're talking about, both for a new city hall and for these other structures that we're talking about, is to go deeply in debt. How much? Well, the $30 to $60 million that you would pay for another site, that $30 to $60 million would be double when you put in interest. That's over $1,000 for each individual in the city. Now, that's a lot of money, and it means probably $4,000 to $5,000 per household. I think that's a significant amount of money. We passed, just the last couple of budget items, we're 3% at 50 for the lifeguards. It turns out now that the state, that Orange County, and I believe it's Long Beach, it's either Long Beach or LA, and I believe it's Long Beach, have renegotiated their retirement contracts with employees on the basis that they will be bankrupt, they will not get paid the money that would be owed, you won't get it. And so basically, they lowered their net liabilities there by 50%. That kind of thing, if we were to do that with our employees, which are the same bases, would allow us some of the capital outlay that we had this last year. Now, it's possible that we have this hidden in some pocket, you know? We have a lot of pockets around that are allocated for this and allocated for that, but not the kind of money we're talking for a new city hall. The point I'm making is, is that this property value of near zero for this thing is very, very lucrative. It has very good transportation factors, it has somewhat of a view that the place will have, it will not impede the view of others. The particular subdivision, Debbie found that she had no financial gain by having it there or not having it there, so that would mean that having it there wouldn't hurt her. I don't see any big argument reason. The argument reason she used of possible lights from the parking lot or something like this, I don't really see her there. I think we need to look at responsibility here, and I think we need to look at, are our citizens willing to take on this huge debt value? Because we've got a big ego that we're going to spend a lot of money on capital-type goods, when some of these places will save an ex- when some of these places will save an extreme amount of money, and it makes very good sense doing it. And I urge you to reconsider this and leave it on the table until you've got a better plan, on one that you can sell to the city. And it seems to make sense to me. And I don't know, maybe it doesn't make any sense to you, you've got plenty of money, but I don't think you have rights into my pocketbook. Thank you.
Thank you, Debra.
Mr. Mayor and council persons, my name is Barton Beek. I'm a resident of Corona Del Mar. As I understand it, your agenda item here is to consider whether or not to rescind a resolution that you adopted four weeks ago. I didn't realize until I got here that we were going to talk about Mrs. Allen's conflict of interest. It sounds to me, from what I've heard tonight, that if she has a conflict of interest, it's technical, legal technicality, but I think she has done, maybe for the benefit of all of us, a wonderful job of putting together a hard-hitting, compact, effective group of supporters who clearly have their minds made up about the use of that parcel above the library. Whether she's right or wrong about that is a different question, but she's done a hell of a job in putting together her team, and I got to admire her for that. That's in the great American political tradition. Anyway, on the matter of whether you should rescind the resolution, I think you're very wise to reconsider. And I urge you to rescind the resolution that you adopted four weeks ago. You give up nothing if you rescind. You retain complete freedom to do whatever you want with that parcel, just as you had five weeks ago. You don't need the resolution of four weeks ago. It ties your hands. I think you're too wise to tie your own hands. I urge you to keep your options open, because there are a lot of options. This afternoon, I read very carefully the minutes of your February 27 meeting, which I attended. I was amazed at the number of people who spoke to this issue at that meeting. Six pages, single-spaced, covers a summary of what they had to say. Seventy people spoke, all sides of the issue. They expressed a wide variety of points of view, a wide variety of reasoning. Seems clear to me your constituency has not been fully advised or informed, it has not formed, your constituency has not formed a decision as to what the issue really is here. They're not clear on what the issue is. You read those remarks, you can see that. The people need more time to think about this, and you need to do a better job of informing your constituency so that when the time comes, and it hasn't come yet, for a decision, they'll be capable of voting on it. And I think you ought to put it to the vote of the people, because with all respect to Mrs. Allen, her group is not very large compared to the population of the city. Well, in closing, I'd like to call to your attention the remarks which were recorded in your minutes, the remarks of your assistant city manager, who, the remarks appear on page 61, and these point out that the current general plan designation for the site is open space and would require a vote of the people to change that designation. I don't know whether technically she's right about that or not, but that certainly is an issue. And then she points out that the city standard is to provide five acres of parks and open space for every thousand residents, and she points out that in the Newport Center area, the city has already provided more than that standard, but in this area, it has provided less. And she makes it clear, I think, in her remarks and what she said here, that park space and city hall space are interchangeable. If you put a city hall here, then you can't put a park here. But if you don't put the city hall here or keep it here, you have park space to trade off. So, it's really not, you're not sacrificing park space by putting a city hall someplace. Only way you save that space is not have a city hall at all. I don't think I recommend that. Thank you.
I think some people might not share that opinion, Mr. Beek. Thank you, though, for your comments.
My name is Mike Johnson. I'm a resident of this fair city for going on 45 years, and I have been involved with parks ever since we moved in here, and my youngest child was two years old, and I had two others that were about four and six at the time, and there were no parks for them to play in, in West Newport. In fact, anywhere west of the bay, there were no parks. West Newport was very badly ignored. So, we organized the West Newport Beach Improvement Association, which we've shortened to West Newport Beach Association. I'm currently historian there, and after 45 years, I got a lot of history. And I had the privilege of serving on the Parks, Beach, and Recreation Commission for six years back in the '70s. And I had a low point and I had a high point, which I'd like to share with you in my historian position. The low point was when we ran a park bond election, and I can't remember the exact amount of the money, but it was going to be sufficient to buy 18 pieces of property around Newport Beach in every area of the city except the peninsula. And where there, there was a loan in the real estate marketplace, so these could be purchased, and some of the developers were going to be glad to get rid of them. Well, we missed that vote of 67% by 2%. And one of the reasons we missed it was, number one, the Ensign newspaper, which is no longer published over in Corona Del Mar, misplaced a decimal point. Instead of $20 a year for the residents, it was $200 a year that they indicated, and that came out the night before the election. The other problem was, we didn't have anything for the peninsula. There was no place to put a park over there, and as we analyzed the voting results afterwards, where did we have the most no votes? Nowhere. But the high point while I was chairman was that we established and dedicated the West Newport Beach Park. And it was a kind of a crazy park because it was the old PE right-of-way, and there was enough room there in addition to this about 50-foot to 60-foot width going down Seashore Drive between Seashore Drive and the Pacific Coast Highway from 56th Street up to 76th Street, that we could get a beautiful grass, palm trees, landscaping, and dress up a pretty ugly area prior to that time that's an entrance to our fair city. We also were able to squeeze in four tennis courts, which at that time were very, very popular, still are very popular. I walk my little poodle dog past them, and they're busy most of the time. We put in four handball courts. You've seen them as you drive by on Pacific Coast Highway, and they're busy all the time. But that park is used. We have picnic tables, we have two restroom facilities, we have three top lot parks that as I walk my poodle, they're busy with kids and young parents. It makes my heart feel good. Basically, I'm describing a piece of property which is linear, not too far removed from the one we're talking about over here by the library, with busy Drive-McArthur, we can exchange the Pacific Coast Highway, and we have a very people-friendly park that we've been able to develop, and I wasn't involved with the design of the park, but I really appreciate the work that was done. Now, I look at this open-space park that they're planning for the library, and contrasted with the people-friendly park that we have over there in West Newport, I see a park that doesn't have any restrooms, it doesn't have any grass, it's, I don't know if it even has any drinking fountains, and it's hard to get to, and maybe they can make some changes, but I think that that park should be reexamined to make it so it is people-friendly as Western Newport Beach Park has proven to be. I would really recommend that you send this design of the park and get it away from a park that would be hostile to visitors because it has no reason to go there, into one that people want to go over and use a picnic table or just enjoy the beauty of the landscaping and the grass and all the things that we have in Western Newport Beach Park. I urge you to try again.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council people. My name is Garrett Smith. Been a resident 50 years in Newport Beach. I live in Corona Del Mar presently. Things change in Newport Beach. It was good a long time ago, it's even better now. Deborah Allen deserves our thanks for almost two decades of volunteer service on behalf of those who don't get involved. It's wonderful that she has the time and the interest to belong to so many different groups, and she does, as she does, and to represent all those different Newport Beach organizations and the thousands of men and women and children connected to them. But I don't think she should be singled out. There are many who are active in more than two, two or three more homeowners association, environmental groups, or no-growth movements. I belong to two homeowner associations myself. It's the least I can do, because I don't like going to meetings, lobbying the city council is something I don't care to do. I've given my proxy to more than one community association board. They need these proxies because they can't get enough members at their meetings in order to elect a new board. My point being is, the boards represent themselves, they don't represent the people. I've never been given a ballot to vote on any issue, nor have I ever seen the results of any vote on any issue. They have my address, because I get my dues statement regularly, and I also get a request for proxies. Yet, to my amazement, when I came to the meeting a month or two ago, I found that my, these two associations I belong to were favoring the park and no city hall. We were never asked as members of the community, but members of the association. I feel boards of these associations are packed with like-minded people, also, like Deborah Allen, belong to the boards of many associations, advisory boards, environmental groups. So, you hear those same people, ideas put forth to you time after time after time, the same people. Using these groups as you have done does not give you a clear picture of how Newport Beach people feel as a whole. The only way to find out what your constituents want is to have a vote. Let us vote. Give us the choice to see if all of Newport Beach wants a unused park there that we all pay for, for only those living near it will benefit from it. Even if donations pay for the initial installation of the natural view park, that is nothing compared to what the maintenance will be. The maintenance will exceed the cost of the improvements. To complete the process, add to the vote of whether to have this park or not, but to have it and include the city hall in a real park as the alternative. This would be paid for by all the people of Newport Beach, enjoyed by all the people of Newport Beach, be a pride of citizens of Newport Beach, and the envy of all other cities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, my name is Jack Crowell of Corona Del Mar. Because Debbie, Deborah Allen lives closer than 500 feet to the Avocado Park site, there appears to be a legal requirement that the City Council negate the recent vote regarding the park and must ask the Park Commission to vote again with Ms. Allen abstaining. But the Daily Pilot states that Ms. Allen has been on the Park Commission for seven years, so it would seem logical that during those seven years, she would have participated in many discussions and decisions related to this park. If during all of that seven-year period, Ms. Allen's place of residence was within 500 feet of the park site, it seems that the proper thing to do is to take this whole park issue back to the beginning, back to the days of the community outreach. A lot of things have changed since the original outreach, so I am requesting that the City Council reopen the whole question of the use of that land as a park, or a city hall, or whatever. We need to redo the whole procedure, begin with a fresh community outreach. It should now be clear to all of us that the citizens of Newport Beach have serious differences on how that 12-acre piece of land should be used. For years, the park advocates have been living in their own little world, and the rest of the city's 59,000 voters have pretty much ignored the 12-acre site. But now, the silent majority is beginning to speak up and wants to look at alternatives to a 12-acre park. Let's go back to the beginning, let's go back to the beginning and get it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell.
My name is Hugh Logan, and I don't live next to the park, I do live in Newport Beach. Honorable Mayor Rosansky and members of the City Council, I was under the impression that we're being asked tonight to decide whether the actions of a longtime city volunteer merits sending the question which was voted on last month back to the PBNR Commission. Now, multitudes of citizens have supported this park, and thousands driving by the park's glorious vista have been struck by the beauty and uniqueness of the city. We have all gained by preserving this special place in the heart of our city. We are grateful for each of the hundreds of volunteers and Commissioner Allen for their selfless commitment to Newport Beach. I am confident that this council will hear this matter fairly this evening, remembering that many people, not just one, recognize the lasting and irreplaceable value of protecting this land as a park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, excuse me, I'm Bob Shelton, I live in Corona Del Mar, and I'm about a 51-year resident of Newport Beach. It seems to me that the conflict of interest issue is really secondary tonight. The way it has evolved is unfortunate, and my sympathies are with Debbie Allen for how this thing has played out. But the real issue is whether or not the already-made decision on the Newport Center Park site is the right one. And it occurs to me that if we all give some hard thought to this regarding where the city hall is likely to be, or should be, let's think about it. First of all, we know that the community is solidly opposed, or majority of it, is opposed to keeping it here. The majority is very much in favor of some site in Newport Center. The City Council has accepted that advice and has diligently- The city council has accepted that advice and has diligently sought a site in Newport Center, but the results have been disappointing. The negotiations with property owners have been unsuccessful. The council unwisely, I think, has denied or declined to use the power of eminent domain, which could very logically and very legally be applied in this situation, but you've decided not to do that. You've taken off the table the Newport Center Park site two or three times, which leaves us with the OCTA, we'll call it, site, as far as I can understand, as the only one left to receive consideration. And yet, we don't really know much about it, or how feasible it will be. We're waiting to see.
Bob, I know you want to talk about the city hall, but we really need to limit it to the rescission.
Well, okay, the decision, all right, I'll accept that. But this is one more reason, given the facts of what's still on the table, we really need to take another look at the Newport Center Park site for joint use. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Evy Compton, I'm a longtime resident of Newport Beach. I request that you rescind your decision to initiate the park process. Spending our limited resources on this park at this time is not the right thing to do. Very few people, if any, will use the park. It's not safe for children to walk or ride bikes across that busy street. There are many safe parks in the area that kids will use with playgrounds and ballfields. Adults will not drive there, it will be a noisy park to sit and look at the view. Adults tend to go to quiet parks. People working in Fashion Island will not walk over there and use the park. I worked in Fashion Island for over 15 years, and I can tell you, there isn't time on the lunch break to grab your lunch and walk over there and enjoy the park. I urge you to reconsider your decision and use these valuable funds, limited funds that we have for parks, on projects that people will use. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Compton.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Lucille Keon, a former city council member. I was not able to be here on the 25th of February because I was in Hoag Hospital. I'll be very brief. I would urge that you rescind your motion, and I would give a little bit of background. I think Mr. Crowell and I have something in common, we're both benefactors at UCI. Neither one of us would dare suggest the architecture of anything that we have given, nor the use to which the money is to be made. I think, I will suggest something new, that I think we're constrained by the so-called anonymous donor. I would suggest that we give back to him his $600,000, which is a mere 16% of the park's cost, as it is estimated now at 3.8 million, that you consider a tabula rasa, a clean slate, start from the beginning, get all the input that you can, and then make some kind of suggestion to the members of the city, which has fiscal responsibility. You've all received my communication some time ago with my points, so I won't repeat them now, the evening is late, I don't want to be redundant. Thank you for your hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Keon.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Philip Barst, I live in Corona del Mar. My compliments to council members Selick, Gardner, Curry, and Hen for voting to protect public parkland. We're some 30 acres plus short of public parkland in the city now, it's a precious resource, particularly as the city will be growing. I think the real issue is not Deborah Allen's alleged conflict of interest, the real issue is finding the best site for the city hall. Building city hall, and it would have to be a lowering of the grade in the park site to accommodate it and protect views, would not be conducive to having a first-class city hall. People would be looking at dirt embankments, well, plant them with flowers, but it still would be a sunken city hall, and with much of its light cut off. This is not a fitting approach for this city. The basic problem that needs to be solved is obtaining a prime centrally-located site for the city hall, as was recommended by the Site Location Committee, they recommended Corporate Plaza West. I note that the Irvine Company's received 300 to 400 million dollars in new entitlements, 450 dwelling units and commercial space, as part of the general plan update, yet they can't see it to help the city out after getting an entitlement like that to sell the site in Corporate Plaza. I think the council should hold the Irvine Company liable, call it, should put their feet to the fire, having made that entitlement, to get a good Corporate Plaza West site, instead of the poor site above the library. Something I wrote in a newspaper column, and I'll repeat, if you feel that it's too contentious for you to deal with the Irvine Company on that basis, we in Greenlight offer to negotiate with the Irvine Company. What we would do is write an initiative to take back that land, to take back that entitlement, and ask that you pay for the legal help and put it on the ballot. I think that would be a powerful incentive for the Irvine Company to deal with you and to get the best site, something that the site above the library is not. Sure, they'll recognize the economic advantage of dealing fairly with the city on that basis. Another way to solve this problem would be to correct the inefficiency of city government operations. I know Mr. Ficker is still here, but he wrote a paper demonstrating that the city operates very inefficiently. Huge amounts of paper are handled manually, it takes a long time to get the paper out to various departments and back. And you can compare that to a typical hospital system where patient records are on a database and the hospital can operate efficiently. We need nothing less in our city, and we won't need all the space in the new city hall if operations are brought under control. So, to summarize, I think that Newport Center Park is just right as it is. It serves the public, it preserves parkland. What needs to be examined are the city's relationship with the Irvine Company and the correction of inefficient operations in the city government. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Nancy Skinner, and I would appreciate it very much if you would allow this park information to go back to PB and R, whether or not you decide ultimately to put combined city hall and park together or not. I would think it would be really helpful to the citizens to have a chance to look at what is designed for the park, even if there isn't a building on it. I just think you couldn't lose having the opportunity to look at both things, and I think it would be very helpful to, and actually quite healing in the long run to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Good evening, Mayor Rosansky. I didn't want to speak tonight, I think we've had too many people speak tonight, because I believe the issue was only, does the 500-feet conflict of interest apply or not? Okay? And the question, if we like city hall there, or if we like a park there, I believe that isn't what's before council right now. I believe it's just if the fair political practice code applies or not, okay? And if Mr. Allen is right that it doesn't apply, then I think, you know, that's what we should be discussing, and we've already discussed this park and city hall for hours and hours and hours again. So I hope we can just stay on the issue, should, does the conflict exist or not? And if it does exist, if we have to go back, I'm sure in two or three months we'll be right back here where we're at, where the same council members vote to support the park as it is. And if we have to go through that process because of some, for some legal reason, then let's do it. If we don't, then, you know, please, I don't want to hear about any more parks or city hall sites tonight, because we, that isn't the issue, is it?
Thank you, Mr. George.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm Ron Hendrickson, I'm sorry that George took up that time, because we've got to keep moving along here. But I'm resident of the Harborview Homes Port Streets, and I just wanted to correct something that was said here a moment ago, that we're 30 acres short of park in this city. And I agree that we're short of active parks, but we're certainly not short of passive parks. And I think most of you know, but maybe our audience doesn't know, there are 240 acres in the Crystal Coast State Park that are within the city of Newport Beach, and for whatever reason, I don't know, but they're not counted on our park count. We also don't count anything in the Back Bay, and we all know that we have, you know, literally hundreds of acres in the Back Bay that are used for recreation. So I think people need to really understand that this 12-acre park is something that's really not needed at this time, if we're going to spend that kind of money. I'd also like to suggest that if there is a motion for rescinding tonight, which they have some question about, why don't we include the addition of the analysis of the Ficker Plan? This has really never been done by this city, everybody has shied away from it. It would be a relatively simple thing to do, but there's great frustration in this city by virtue of the fact that it's not been analyzed. Yes, it came before a study session, but that's not the kind of forum that people in this city get to see because they occur in the afternoon. I'd also like to note that, as Barry Allen mentioned here, and I think it was in the op-ed in the pilot this morning, that the Allens' appraiser says that a city hall in this park would have no impact on their home, and therefore, I presume, homes around their home. So, you know, what is the big deal about the homeowners up there being so terribly concerned with what's going to happen in this park? They just want to see grass and apparently nothing else, but a two-and-a-half acre, or 2.8 acre parcel for a city hall is such a negligible portion of this park that it's really unfortunate. We're all going to go down the path of not taking up that opportunity, so. Anyway, I hope that you do rescind the action, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrickson.
Good evening, Mayor Rosansky, city councilmembers, my name is Jan Van Der Sluit, I live in Newport Heights, I have been representing Spawn on this issue. This issue is really not about Deborah Allen, but it's about the people of Newport Beach who have been working for this park since the Fiosa Agreement of 1992, and I ask that you not rescind your vote. I think the city has been a little bit remiss in not verifying the distance of Deborah Allen's house from the park. The city states that her house is 375 feet from the park by a GIS map, but that really is not a truly accurate way of judging distance. A land surveyor would be much more accurate, and the land surveyor retained by the Allens placed their house over 500 feet from the park and 480 feet from the edge of the library. So I think actually, before you would take any action at all on rescinding your vote, you'd actually verify whether or not she actually has a potential conflict of interest as defined under the Fair Political Practices Act. So I think the city has been a little bit too quick in bringing this matter to your attention, and I think that you should not be making any kind of rescinding vote until you actually verify whether or not, you know, the potential conflict of interest actually exists. I think that you did plenty of discussion at the last February 27 meeting about the merits of the park versus city hall, and I commend you for your vote, and I hope that you stay, you continue to uphold your vote on the park, keeping it as a park for all the people of Newport Beach, and that if you have any question at all as to whether or not Deborah Allen's vote was improper as in her capacity as a parks commissioner, I would recommend, I think that would be reasonable perhaps to not rescind your vote, but to continue the matter until after the Parks Commission has heard the matter, perhaps with Debbie Allen abstaining or recusing herself from the vote, and then coming back to you. And if nothing has changed, if the Parks Commission goes ahead and improves the park proposal, then I would think that you should continue supporting the park proposal, but I don't think it's appropriate to actually rescind your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Van Der Sluit. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, so you know what, I'll close the public comments. I do have a question of staff, though, before we open it up for the council. A lot of this argument revolves around a presumed conflict, and the conflict arises out of whether Ms. Allen lives within 500 feet of the property or not. So my question is, and I don't know if anybody from here, from staff can answer it, but how sure, or how much confidence do we have in our ability of the GIS department and the maps that they prepare to estimate or not estimate, come to a number as far as
The GIS maps are, it's my understanding, pretty close, like within five feet of showing distance. The FPPC judges by a radius showing on a map of a distance, so the presumption is based upon that, not a survey or not any other type of information. And it's up for, it's really the FPPC's decision ultimately of determining whether there's a 500-foot distance, whether it's within the 500-foot or not. I think that the GIS map is accurate, we double-checked with the topo and some other public works documentation to show the distance, and looked at that, and it appears as if that information is accurate. The issue, excuse me, of how you measure the 500-foot radius is, it's within the standard that's used up and down the state by all cities. It's the standard that the city council has used for years in this city.
So, in this case, the GIS map is saying about 375 feet as compared to the, what the Allens have claimed tonight, or I believe Barry Allen, of over 530 feet, 28 feet, or whatever the number he used?
Correct.
So, and you're absolutely certain that the amount of error in these maps is not 125 feet or more?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think that one of the, perhaps, confusions is where you measure to and from. It's my understanding that the map went from the corner of the Allens' property to the corner of the parcel that is, was dedicated through the CESA Agreement, as opposed to the corner of the library itself, and that that corner is considered part of the park parcel, but it's also an area where there would be perhaps some parking as a part of the original plans, too. But at any rate, that's considered to be the park parcel, all the way from there up to San Miguel, I believe. And so my question is, is really... And so my question is, is really that from the GIS system, you were looking at measuring from the corner of her property to the nearest corner of what was dedicated under the CIESA Agreement. Is that correct?
The, the GIS map looked at a radius of 500 foot from all points around the property. So that radius completed and covered into approximately 125, is it, 125 feet, into both the library, I mean, the, the map shows into both the library and the park parcel. So it's, it's a difference. I haven't had a chance, and I have not reviewed the surveyor information, but that information is, the, the information is information that the FPPC or somebody else would determine, not necessarily this council. It's not the council's, this, it's not the council's responsibility to determine whether or not there is actually a conflict. I was just advising the council of what the rules were.
Councilman Curry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Many of you at home and in the audience are sitting there, and I'm sure you're asking, what in the name of merciful God and heaven above are these people doing? At the time of the February 27 vote, we were apparently contacted by, by attorney in town, raising this conflict question and playing the gotcha card with the council's decision. Now, the city attorneys researched the law and found that if there is a conflict, a potential litigant could seek an injunction that would stop the development of the park, cost the taxpayers additional money, and seek to recover their attorney fees pursuant to the city. Now, many of you saw the excellent story in the Orange County Register about the slip-and-fall artists and professional litigants who sue cities to collect at the expense of the taxpayers. Now, in order to protect the taxpayers and deny those who would, do not respect the democratic process from potentially cashing in, we're considering this action tonight. Pure and simple, it is lawsuit inoculation. And it's for that reason only, and on the advice of council, that I will consider supporting sending this issue back to the PBNR Commission for up to 60 days for a de novo review of the recommendation for the park design. Now, they may very well reaffirm the current plan, and I would expect that they probably will, and that would be perfectly fine. They may also choose to make some changes in the configuration of the parking benches or similar issues, and I'm okay with that, too. But one way or the other, they will provide advice on how the park should be developed as a park. And we will not go back to the Garden of Eden and consider what type of park it should be. And I appreciate the mayor's comments that this is not a reopening of the City Hall issue. This site was removed from consideration last year, and there is no majority to support reconsidering it now. I would also note that the report of the PBNR Commission is advisory, and indeed, three councilmembers were willing to move in a different direction than what they recommended the last time this issue was considered. I'd like us also to examine these charges carefully that have been leveled against Commissioner Debbie Allen about conflict of interest. Commissioner Allen has served our community with distinction and honor as a volunteer for decades. She is one of our most selfless and civic-minded citizens. There is no evidence, allegation, or even suggestion that she has in any way, shape, or form improperly profited personally by as much as a penny as a result of her service to the city. And any suggestion for such a profiteering would be an outrageous falsehood. She stands accused of expressing an opinion about the park. Doesn't actually matter what the opinion was, by the way, while living within 500 feet of the park. A charge that in itself is under dispute. Expressing opinions on parks is what we expect our park commissioners to do. Now, it's interesting to note, as we've researched this, that this rule applies to the PBNR Commission, but it doesn't apply to the Environmental Quality Advisory Committee. It applies to the Harbor Commission, but not the Water Quality Committee. And in the end, I think this exercise will simply discourage good people from serving our city. What I hope tonight is that this does not signal that we, as a city, are moving into the win-at-any-cost, politics of personal destruction, and disregard for the democratic process that characterizes so much of what we see in Washington and Sacramento. Because if that's the case, it really represents a failure. It doesn't matter if we build a park or a City Hall or a gas station on this site, we will have permanently changed our city for the worse and damaged our collective sense of community. Now, I've been proud of our citizens in this debate on both sides of the issue. Both sides have conducted themselves with civility, with dignity, with principled debate, and with respect for the other side, avoiding personal attacks. And I wish the same could be said about some of the opinion pieces that have appeared in the local newspaper that have served to lower the level of our civic discourse. I hope today marks the day that we collectively choose to respect the democratic process and turn away from constantly generating division, rancor, and distrust in our community in order to advance a fairly rejected City Hall plan, because frankly, that's what it is. The stakes are too high for us to do otherwise in the community. And, Mr. Mayor, I would offer a motion for debate, that we refer this back to the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission for up to 30 days on a de novo basis to consider the design of the park and to report back to the City Council. And that we direct staff to suspend any action, to spend any money pursuant to our action taken at the, I guess, February 27 meeting, until we receive that report.
Anybody else that would like to comment on this matter? Councilman Selich?
Yeah, would you consider making that, the Parks Commission meeting next, next week, April 3, and report back to us, second meeting in April? I mean, why wait 30 days?
I would, yes, I would.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Webb?
Well, I guess I, I would, of course, I don't support that. I think that, that when, we need to give the Parks and Recreation Commission an opportunity to look at this item fully. And as far as trying to put it in the next agenda, it, it does not give sufficient time to, to have staff reports prepared, as well as getting, letting the public know of it, of, of what's going on. I think that Councilmember Curry's 60-day proposal is, is realistic, to get, give the public an opportunity to fairly look at an unbiased use of that piece of land.
Actually, he said 30 days, I think, not 60.
Well, he said 60 in his remarks and then 30 in the motion.
I didn't mean 60, I'm sorry.
Councilman Gardner?
I just want to emphasize a couple of things. I think Deborah Allen is in a position to show that no good deed goes unpunished. Our city is a better place because of Deborah and what she has done. This is one of those very painful things, because when we act, I want to be very clear that if we are doing it, it is, as Keith has said, it is to inoculate ourselves. It is not as a criticism or a judgment in any other way. And as far as, as I'm concerned, it's, it's a matter of cleaning up the books. I'm assuming, I mean, I, I can't believe that one person has such a powerful personality that six other commissioners flop every time she says jump, or they jump every time she says jump. So I, I mean, I'm assuming that it will come back to us with the same recommendations. Perhaps not, though. Perhaps she is the Emperor Ming, Ming the Merciless. And, and they will, they only obey her. But I just want to clarify that, that this is not about personalities. It's not about Deborah Allen, except that she's been a tremendous asset to our community.
Councilman Hahn?
Well, Debbie, I feel for you. I think this is a very unfortunate collision of a last-minute development and a quick decision to deal with it. And it seems to me we would have been well-advised to allow a little more time for one of the tenants of our country to be employed here, which is that you are considered innocent until proven guilty and not the other way around. It seems like we've fallen into that trap a little bit here. And I recognize that there is a presumptive issue that we have to deal with because of the way the Fair Political Practices Commission works. I am only in a position to support this motion on the basis that the issue, which I believe is what you intend here, the only issue that the PBNR should be considering is the nature of the park. There is no other issue for them to consider, as far as I am aware. They are not to consider the issue of whether this is to be a site for City Hall or any other such thing. Their determination has to do with parks. And so as long as they understand that this is a narrow consideration about what the configuration of that park should be, I'm happy to support this motion. I do it with regret, though, because I think it's just a very unfortunate development here that really shouldn't have happened in the grand scheme of things. I would add, though, that in my view, I do want to make sure that if we are to do this, that the PBNR feels as though they've had adequate time to review it. And so it would be with the admonishment that if they, after discussion, feel like two weeks or four weeks isn't enough time, they should suggest to us how much time they believe they need to adequately revet their view of what that park should be configured to be.
Just for clarity, Mr. Mayor, I, talking with your Selich, I, I think if we use the term "up to 60 days," that's acceptable to, to, my second to myself.
I haven't heard a second of your motion yet. I'm assuming...
Well, I'll, I'll second the, I'll second the motion. Could we word it, report back as soon as possible, but no later than 60 days? And then let them decide how to work in that timeframe?
That's fine.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments. This difficult decision, I've known Deborah Allen for many years, and during that period of time, she's shown me nothing but the highest integrity in many, many years of community service. And, and I'm not sure this inoculates us against anything. I thought it did. I've had discussions with the city attorney. And if we don't, if we don't send it back to the, to the Parks Commission, if someone does take some legal action against us, we would probably prevail. But what it does is, it provides some additional insurance that someone won't sue us because the, because we've gone back and sent it back to the Parks Commission, but it doesn't guarantee us, guarantee us anything. And it's a decision that's out of our hands. We don't determine who has a conflict. It's up to the FPPC to determine that. That's, that's not our determination. So to me, it's really a matter of credibility, I guess, that we send it back in public perception. I've always said that it's, in government, it's not what you're doing, it's what you're appearing to be doing. And so it seems to me that as much as it pains me to do this, that it appears to be the right thing, and it would appear to the public to be the right thing to do. And so with that, I very reluctantly am going to support sending this back to the Parks Commission as Councilmember Curry's motion indicated.
Councilman Diggle?
Yes, Deborah Allen has been very involved in many of our civic activities, and she's always been very gracious towards me. And although we don't agree on all the issues, you know, there's some very important issues that we did agree on, the Corona del Mar beautification, which was a very important project. Both the merchants and the residents all appreciate that project. And certainly the lines of communication are open. And I would hope that Mrs. Allen and all of our citizens feel as if they could approach me on any issue, and then I'm always open to new information and new ways of looking at things. So I wanted to thank her for all of her community service, and I do support the motion.
I just have a concern that if we are inoculating, trying to inoculate ourselves, is it enough if we just ask them, ask PBNR, to consider the narrow question of the shape of the park? Or do we need to go back and ask that original question, should it be a park?
Well, I haven't really had a chance to weigh in here yet, and so I will at this point in time, and then we'll open up for some further comment. I, I guess I tend to agree and disagree with my colleagues here. I, too, think that Deborah is probably a victim of this process. We're not here to convict her one way or another. It's, there's, you know, that's not our job. Our job is to, to make a decision, you know, as to what's in the best interest of the city at this point in time. There's a presumption. You know, I have to believe our staff, I think, as the other councilmembers are, are saying here, that, you know, because of the presumption that's been raised, or the issue that's been raised and the presumption that exists, that we do need to go back and rescind our decision and review the park decision again. I don't agree, though, that what we're, we're totally talking about here is inoculation from legal recourse. I mean, certainly that is a big issue here, and, and, you know, we always have to be careful. And our actions that, and the things that we do, that we don't bring lawsuits upon the city unnecessarily. And so I think that will be an important result of rescinding our prior action and sending this back to, to the PBNR Commission. But I've also heard, again, the word integrity. It was heard the night that we voted on this issue. It's, I've heard it from the public. I've heard it from councilmembers up here, integrity. And so, you know, I think it's not just a matter of inoculation, but it's a matter of integrity. Now, I've seen a report that says that this issue's been considered, or at least the park, there was some considerable outreach done back in as early as 2000, 2001, 2002, as to determine what the uses of this park were going to be. And I believe that Ms. Allen joined the commission back in 2000. So, you know, if we're going to be looking at the, at the decision and whether or not there's been a conflict, conflict has existed way before, a month ago, or a year ago. I mean, it's, Ms. Allen, for better or for worse, has been involved with this park and the decisions around it for seven years now. And I think that if we're going to talk about integrity and integrity of the process, I don't know any park that's been developed in town here that hasn't had community outreach prior to a decision being made on the park. And so I think that because of Ms. Allen's association with the Parks Commission for the last seven years, and the fact that, you know, obviously she's been there or involved in some way, shape, or form, probably at every step of the way, as a Parks Beach and Recreation Commissioner, that we do need to go back and review the entire process. And that's just my position. That's, I think that is what's going to restore the integrity of this process, not just putting a Band-Aid on this and trying to, you know, sweep it under the rug or make it go away, because I don't think that's what the residents of this city expect. I think that they do expect the utmost integrity in the process that, and the processes that we have established here in town for doing things. And to short-circuit that process, again, to move forward quickly because we can do it that way, because there are potentially four votes to do it that way, is not the right thing to do. And so I'll make an alternative motion that we do send it back to PBNR, but with the instruction that they do conduct further community outreach, similar to what they would do with any other park decision made in town, with what we're going to do with Marina Park, what we're going to do with Sunset Ridge Park. And that would be my recommendation or my motion.
I'll second that.
Would you support the 60-day timeframe or no?
I wouldn't, because I don't know that any community outreach can be done in 60 days. And, and I've never seen any park decision made, and obviously this one wasn't made in 60 days. It's taken seven years to get here. I would certainly hope that they wouldn't take seven years. But I don't think 60 days is reasonable to, to, to really do the process right. So I, I would send it back with maybe the same instruction that Councilman Selich, that they do it as, as quickly as they, they can, as long as the, you know, they don't short-circuit the process. And it's not just, you know, a matter of, of just, you know, going through the motions. I, I would expect a full and robust outreach program and full and robust discussions at PBNR before it came back to the City Council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Webb?
I, too, I mean, I've, I've worked with Debbie since she was on the Planning Commission in 1970s, I believe, and, and as a staff member, and, and I have to echo others when I said that she has been an extremely dedicated individual at working for the city and trying to do the best thing for the city. And I, I find this really an unfortunate situation. I think that one of the things that I, I feel that we really shouldn't be doing is, is directing... I think that one of the things that I feel that we really shouldn't be doing is directing the PBNR Commission on what they should be doing in reference to their considerations. And I agree with Mayor Rosansky and Councilmember Gardner, that, yes, they should act as rapidly as they can, but they should also make sure that they are giving this determination the proper study and allowing the input that's necessary to make the determination and recommendation that they need to make to come back to us.
I would have to disagree with that, and I disagree with the community outreach. It has been done. But the fact that, I mean, we could constantly do new community outreach every time any new thing comes up. That wasn't what I was thinking of. This is a matter of just asking PBNR to either affirm their long decisions, the number of decisions they've made, just to say, was there undue influence by one member, who may or may not have a conflict of interest? But to go back and ask this whole process to start over again, I can't support that.
Councilman Hen?
Yeah, this isn't even an issue of undue influence, in my view. This is simply an issue of reconfirming in a deliberative process without possibility of challenge or question what the park use of this property should be. This is not a question of whether it should be used as a park. That's been determined. And so, it seems to me that the outreach that was done before is perfectly valid still. It was public outreach. It wasn't Debbie Allen outreach. It was public outreach. And therefore, we should be able to, I would think, rather readily, review the record, rediscover and re-debate the merits of what the configuration of this park should be, and send back up a recommendation. And I just don't see the need for some drawn-out process of outreach.
As I understand the motion, it wasn't that constricting. It was that send it to PBNR, have them come back in sixty days. I mean, it seemed in PBNR's judgment, if they wanted to hold a meeting, they could do that. They wouldn't be prevented from doing that. Okay. So it's...
Wait, wait. What are you talking about?
Councilman Curry's motion.
Well, PBNR, within that timeframe, can do whatever process they want to do to come back to us with a recommendation, a de novo recommendation as to how the park should be configured. I'm fine with that. If they want to...I'm sure at their meeting, it's a public meeting, there's testimony from the public at their meeting, and I'm sure they're going to get several hours of it, just like we have, on this topic. I would also make the comment about, as was noted by one of the speakers today in terms of public outreach, PBNR is advisory to the City Council. Now, on this topic, we've taken five hours of public testimony in our last meeting. Seventy speakers, as was noted. We've taken an hour or so of it today. Lord knows, we'll take an hour or so of it when this comes back. And the PBNR Commission is going to find out what it feels like, because I'm sure they're going to get an hour or so of it when it comes to the PBNR Commission. So this is going to be fully vetted by the public before it gets back to us.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Selich.
Yeah, there's been enough public outreach on this with what was done before, and it involved much more than the Parks Commission. There are many people, many groups involved in the public outreach. So I agree with my colleagues that whatever the Parks Commission wants to do within the sixty days, do it, but I would just encourage them to move quicker rather than slower.
Anyone else that would like to comment on that?
I would just say that that motion is broad enough that they could do outreach, so they're not saying no to outreach.
I think the problem is, by limiting it to sixty days, you can't legitimately do the kind of outreach that this city is known for. It just makes a joke of the process. It just kind of...it's just a way for the City Council to kind of brush this off and say, "Okay, we're just going to forge ahead despite whatever, you know, whatever situation we're presented with, we're just going to kind of brush it aside and forge forward without, you know, doing it the way we do it." So, you know, my motion stands. I'll be sad to see it go a different way. I don't think there's any particular rush to get this thing done. I would hope that we would all stand up for the integrity of the processes that we have in place for doing these things. And so, my motion stands. So why don't we vote on...is there any other comment?
Well, I would just say that I don't think it shortchanges the integrity of the process. All the stakeholder groups in this property are clearly established, and if the Parks Commission wants to consult with them during the sixty-day period, it's not shortchanging the process at all. So I disagree with that.
Okay. Please vote on the alternative motion.
With Councilmembers Rosansky and Webb voting in favor of the motion, the motion fails.
Okay, please vote on the original motion.
With Mayor Rosansky voting no, the motion carries.
Okay. Let's move on to item number...oh, we already did eighteen, so we'll move on to item number nineteen. Legislation relating to group homes.
Yes, Bob's...or maybe...I don't know, Bob's still here. I know, I saw him. Actually, I saw her the other day. I was bicycling past his house, and he walked. How you doing? Sixty days.
This is a victory.
I'm...hey, I'm not crying. I'm smiling. You know, it's all irrelevant, anyway. Yeah, what's even stranger is when Deborah Allen and Jim Van...
Let's get this meeting over before midnight. Start talking into that.
All right. We're going to let the people filter out so that we can conduct a meeting. Legislation relating to group homes. I believe we have a staff report from our Assistant City Manager, Dave Kiff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I know it's late, so it won't take too much time here. This is an agenda item that asks you to consider one of three different alternatives relating to state legislation on group homes. One would be to just receive and file and accept what the city has done so far, and the other was to take one of two options relating to a committee recommendation, an IROC committee recommendation involving distancing requirements between group homes. And I have my own opinions about that. I may offer them after public testimony or after your testimony.
You don't live within five hundred feet of a group home, do you?
Before you vote, though.
Dave?
Probably.
Yes.
It was my understanding that the IROC committee, that they were concerned about distancing and that being under the same owners.
Yes. Want me to explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, yeah. Why isn't that in here?
Actually, the current language within Senator Harmon's bill says that if a...if one group home is operated by the same operator within three hundred feet of the same operator's home, then that three hundred foot would be the limit. They couldn't be any closer than that. So there is a...
So it's already covered in Harmon's bill?
It's covered in the bill.
So you're just changing the distance?
The concept that IROC had was to increase that to a thousand feet. They discussed that, and they also thought that the thousand feet should apply between any group home, regardless of the operator. That would be a change, significant change from Harmon's bill.
Regardless of whether it was six or less, or seven or more.
Exactly. Any facility.
Harmon's bill only talks about homes that are owned by the same person or entity.
Okay.
Although the other bill, I think Dutton's bill, talks about...
Dutton's bill is seven and over, right?
But doesn't limit it to the same owner?
Correct.
Yeah.
I guess if I offer some opinions on that, Harmon's bill is Harmon's bill. He took our ideas, which involve some distancing requirements, and said, "Thank you, city, but here's exactly what I think will pass and what I think I want to carry." We've seen the more draconian distancing requirements in bills fail, and I worry that if Harmon's bill is changed from what it is today, the whole bill will fail. And it'd be nice to get those kinds of distancing requirements in there, but you can amend a bill, and as those of you who know how the legislative process works, sometimes a bad amendment in a bill, even if it's taken out later and people say, "Oh, no, maybe that wasn't such a good idea," it could still poison the bill the whole time. A bad bill gets a reputation as being a bad bill. I worry that this recommendation by IROC will hurt the Harmon bill, which is why maybe we could make the recommendation that it go in the Dutton bill, which only has one thing in it, that being a distancing requirement. With that, I think you have some folks in the audience who wanted to speak to this.
Is there anybody in council who has any other questions? We've got a staff report. Okay. I'll open it up to public comment.
Good evening. I'll try to be quick about this. I know it's late. My name is Bob Rush. I'm a twenty-year resident of Newport Beach, largely in West Newport. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for giving us the Intense Residential Occupancy Committee. I was nagging the mayor for so long about.
And thank you for bringing it to my attention.
On multiple occasions, Bob. Every chance I get. No, but I'd also like to thank the mayor for having voted in support of bringing this issue to the council, which I think is a good thing. Now that I've said the nice things, I'll be more pointed in my comments here. I became aware of the existence of SB 1000. I think it was the day after Senator Harmon's town hall meeting. And I was kind of surprised, because, you know, usually, everybody that...within the council and the administration and staff that are working on these things are really...they really go through great lengths to tout their accomplishments and their efforts. So I was very surprised that it was at such a late stage in the SB 1000 preparation that largely the community became aware of it. But I think we're getting better as we go further along in the process of recognizing the issue and trying to corral it and come to grips with it. That being said, in trying to learn about the SB 1000, I got a copy of it, contacted Senator Harmon's office, and found out that it was a compilation of input from a number of different cities within Senator Harmon's jurisdiction, and that largely, as I was told, there was a large amount of input from the city of Newport and from the city of Santa Ana, being that they were two of the cities that had greater concentrations of these things. They had more knowledge about some of the aspects of this bill. But my single question to Senator Harmon's office was, what was the law that this was based upon? That the area particularly surrounding three hundred-foot separation between commonly-owned facilities? It gets a little tricky, so I'm going to speak directly to the issue as opposed to the way it's worded in the bill. It is felt that largely by the community, I've been getting so much input on this thing after it came out, it is felt that, I guess, really from a summary standpoint of what we're trying to accomplish with submitting legislation, we see in front of us now a large movement of cities and of people moving in the direction of the same direction that we are. We're trying to get a handle on it. It seems that a lot of this problem has been created by a conflagration of laws, and there are gaps in those laws, and that's what we're trying to wrestle with. This is a new issue. So...but it's taken...it started off slow, and now we've gained quite a bit of momentum, and I think you'll bear witness to that and the excitement that it was a buzz in the Conference of Cities at the beginning of March. It is felt that it's better to advance good law than to advance not-so-good law and then try to change it later on. And I think that there's some merit to that in that we may create grandfathering issues that we don't foresee right now in trying to change that down the road. I understand...I don't really understand all the nuances of getting laws passed in Sacramento, but I do understand the concept of trying to go down the road and amend it later. And I don't know that that's necessarily a wise strategy. But let me just go through and point out some problems with the bill's structure and kind of show you why I think it's not necessarily the best law, or, excuse me, not necessarily As Dave Kiff just mentioned a moment ago, the two areas that we had problems with were common ownership and the three hundred-foot separation aspects of the legislation. There is one other aspect of the legislation that I don't think was brought up. We didn't...it was kind of chaotic that day at the IROC meeting. It only applies really to licensed facilities, and correct me if I'm wrong on that. Only licensed facilities? Okay. The actual wording that was suggested by IROC to come up to council was that the three hundred foot be changed to one thousand feet, the common ownership be removed, and I don't know that the common ownership aspect being removed was reflected in the staff report to council right now. I think it's just addressing the thousand feet, and I think that that's an omission that Dave and I had spoken about. He was going to mention to you this evening. I mentioned it to you for him. One, it's impossible to track ownership. We understand that these facilities have privacy issues. It's difficult enough to understand composition of patients. I can't imagine how difficult it would be to try to track down ownership. We all, many of us are attorneys here and are familiar with how complicated corporate structures can be. So I think that common ownership is...I'm out of time.
Well, you have five minutes. You've already well exceeded that. I understand...I realize that you speak for a number of people, and you are on the committee, and so I'm going to give you more little...more leeway here, but it's not open-ended, Bob, so...
All right. I'll finish it.
Let's get to the points and move on.
Case law, right now, supporting the three hundred foot and the common ownership is weak at best. There's no binding precedent. There's really no law that so closely resembles what we're trying to pass up to Sacramento that would be binding. The laws are either lower court laws or not on point to what we're passing in this SB 1000, or what we've recommended through this SB 1000. There's inconsistency in how we separate other classes of handicapped group homes and this one. We have many separation requirements under California Health and Safety Code, many separation requirements, fall into two major categories. One category, three hundred-foot separation, dealing with group homes and child-related type of residential group homes. And then another section of group homes related to acute care, specialized care, and correctional type of care. Those are thousand-foot separation requirements. I understand there are some exemptions within the California Health and Safety Code with respect to drug rehab homes. However, we have some kind of unique instance here in that we have drug rehab homes that have element of a penal element to them as well. I mean, we have a quasi-medical penal residential use here. There's also some confusion as to sober living definition within the...and you can see it in the justification that's come out of the city attorney's office, where they talk about sober living, homes are exempted under this, but then when you look at the actual code definition in Health and Safety, it talks about sober living homes that don't require care or supervision. So it's not...it's inconsistent. Finally, if the case law that we've rested the legislative writing on is that universally applicable throughout the country, it stated that it's a federal type of legislation that we're looking at. Well, if it's that strong a legislation, the case law we're looking at, then how do you explain this? The entire state of Florida has thousand-foot separation requirements for all of their rehab homes, and it's existed since 1989. I don't see any discussion of it in any of our literature. I've never heard any discussion of it publicly. any discussion of it publicly. Yet, the state of Florida has it as a state code and all of the cities within Florida have incorporated it into their own local code. Now, I got this actually as a result of listening to Councilman Curry mention a Boca Raton case some meetings ago. And I went and I actually spent some time speaking with the Boca Raton City Attorney's Office. They explained to me, they had a court case that Councilman Curry brought up where they were sued. Now, they were sued because of trying to sequester the drug rehab use to medical and commercial zones, which is not what we're intending to do. But that's why they got sued. But during the course of following that, that case, they said, but we always had 1,000-foot separation requirements anyways. And they don't have a prison diversion aspect to their drug and alcohol rehab facilities. So in previous conversations, I think there had been some analogy between Newport, or some, some parallels between Newport and Boca Raton that, that just don't exist. And, and I can help share that with you, council members, at a later point. But this code's doing 1,000-foot separation between units has been in existence since 1989. And I just spoke with the city attorney for Boca Raton and they largely use them unchallenged. Now-
Okay, Bob, you got to wrap it up.
Okay. There's other issues that we have that are looming on the horizon, that are affecting our houses. We need further separation requirements because we have parolee impact of houses that nobody's really been talking about, where parolees are going into the home instead of true addicts and substance abusers. And they're going in there because courts are mandating clean environments. And so the only place to get a clean environment are these sober living homes or, or rehab homes. And that's a whole nother branch that nobody's talked about. So I, I think that there's a lot of gaps in SB 1000. And I think that we should quickly, quickly look at these things, make the revisions. So I don't think that it's in our best interest to, to send up bad or not good legislation. I think we need to send up good stuff. Our, our efforts are growing. Our momentum is growing. This is not the time to pull back. If what we sent up last year didn't pass, maybe it'll pass this year because of the momentum. And that's, that's basically what I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Counselman-
I have a quick question, Bob.
Yes.
So, you know, one alternative here is to, in effect, pursue your point of view with regard to Senator Dutton's bill. What's wrong with that idea?
Uh, the, the, no, it's a good question. I think the, the bad side of it is that Senator Harmon's bill could get passed. And I think that's harmful to us. I mean, it doesn't really solve the problem. The, the really, the resolution that we're looking for is to address over-concentration. Well, right now, for example, we have a situation in the Heights where there is a, a particular owner who has, or excuse me, a particular, yeah, a particular owner in effect that has set up three different properties with different titles. They have different owner for each of the, but he's, he's really the true owner. And I mean, if Dutton, if Dutton's bill gets through, it only addresses seven and over, first off. So we'd have to make further changes than what we're discussing here. But secondly, if Harmon's bill got through, it, it could actually be a detriment to us here. Because if the, if the requirement is that 300-feet common owners, that means we could have still 12 owners all side by side and it would all be legal. Right now, we have a, we have a chance before us to control that, to, to not let that happen. If Harmon's bill gets through and it passes, I mean, it would become legal to have side by side owners and right down the block. And, and if, and so I, I would tell the, I would recommend to the council that if you're not interested in revising, I would, I would say withdraw all your support for the bill, or even recommend to kill it. Because I mean, it's, it's not going to help us in the community. And it's not what generally, I mean, there've been a lot of eyes on this thing, all kinds of eyes, you know, from the lawyers to non-lawyers. And, and the bill is just not going to help us. It, it will help us in certain respects if we can get our own local code enforcement to be able to do inspections. Yeah, those things are helpful. But the, the heart of it, the guts of it, is the 300, the 300-foot separation and the common ownership is, is the guts of this thing.
Thank you, Bob. Although I gave Bob-
Sorry.
-a lot of extra time here, I'm not going to be as lenient with anybody else. The limit is five minutes.
Can I bring up a couple thoughts-
Sure.
-for everybody to consider as they're, as they're listening to this? The section that they're focusing on is the Section 17, which deals with an amendment to the provisions that talk, that gives an exemption for six-and-under residences. And it talks about, it basically says that right now the law is, is that if you have six or under, then you get treated like any other residential use. And what this amendment attempts to do is say that if you have six or under, but you are working as an integral facility with another facility with six or under, within 300 feet, then you don't get that same benefit anymore because now you're operating more than, more than six, basically, with another integral facility. So I'm wondering if, if a change would be to keep that exemption, because it's, it's, it is ultimately, I think, going to be a helpful one, and maybe suggest an elimination of the 300 feet, which means, and which means that the exemption only applies when you are operating an integral facility with any other facility within a neighborhood or within an area and that it would be owned or operated by another, or provide services that are integral with each other. So then you don't have the owner-operator. And maybe that might expand it better.
There's, there's one small aspect of that. I, they know where in the bill, I know where I can find in any code is where facility is defined. We've had this problem in discussion of, of what constitutes a facility. Is it the major address or is it the minor address? Is it the 8200 Neptune A or 8200 Neptune as an address? That's, the facility definition is also missing in this legislation. So I, I mean, that's one aspect. I, I still, I'd like to work with you on that wording, but I, I think you're getting closer, but I don't know if it's there yet, in my opinion.
I think the, the other option is to maybe recommend that Senator Harmon just eliminate that section change.
So now I'm a little confused. Tell me again what you were saying.
What about, what about eliminating the, the co-ownership and just saying 300 feet of another facility that's operated as an integral part?
Well, what it says, it could say, within 300 feet of another facility that is owned or operated by the same person or entity, or provides services that are integral or shared components of the services.
Yeah.
So that way, it's, you could be, you could be a diff, two different entities, but having operating integral and sharing services with each other. So it wouldn't matter who the owners were.
Whether it's co-owned, just as long as they're operating as, as a unit, co-owned or not co-owned, or multiple entities or not.
And then maybe they could recommend 1,000-foot separation. But the advantage to that would be that, that it's a way to exempt, to exempt from the exemption, these facilities that are operating with six or unders and getting under the radar of the provisions of, that a seven or more operates under, the ability to, to be able to have more control over the seven or more, by just saying each one is six or under and they become, I think the, the statement has been, the bedroom for the major, the bedrooms for the major facilities. And so I think there was a perception that this was an advantage to the city because it, it takes out these types of six-or-under facilities from the exemption that's provided in there, that gives the six-or-under facilities that are really truly operating as an independent use, an advantage of not being impacted by any city regulation.
She's on to everything I'm trying to say.
Well, then you can sit down.
On to it.
Sorry, Dick. Go ahead.
Dick Nichols, Corona del Mar. There is a rule in here that says integral facilities, and it defines it as an integral facility, integral components of the same facility, one. Two, under control and management of the same licensee. And three, licensed as a single facility. And this would be like Narcanon. So it would say that, again, they're integral components of the same facility. So one is not a bedroom of the other. They're, they're, the, in, in the Narcanon case, it's hard to tell which one is the main facility and which one is the bedroom. But the point is, it's the three facilities that are tied together by the same management, operating as a integral thing. That has to have a license. Now, the important thing is, is to, to separate sober living from a group home. And, and the sober living has several definitions, and one of them is it's six or under. The second one is that it receives no monetary aid from any insurance or, or state or anything like that. That, the, the third one is, is that it's not part of a, one of these facilities. So basically, if it's a bedroom for the facility that they have downstairs, like we could call the top a Narcanon, a bedroom for its lower level where they may have their meetings, then you could exempt that if there were only six or under on it. And what they're doing in sober living is they're saying all their facilities, all their bedrooms are, are six or under, therefore they're all exempt. They aren't exempt because the people living in them are signed up to take the programs. And because they're signed up to take the programs, that's a group treatment facility. And it works. I've had the people in the states say that this can be upheld, or at least it, it hasn't been decided in the opposite. The, this is the way, sober living then would be a, a distributed facility. It has 100 different homes throughout the city, but they feed the same operating facilities. And basically, their, their license, the people in those homes are licensed and have to go to that facility to take their courses and so forth. That means each one of those can require a license. Now you have an idea where they are. You get to get the fire department in there to see that that's properly taken care of. There's adult, adult facility requirements on, on facilities. So you, so you have something like that to use. And then finally, you have the multiple facility alone, which would be maybe like the Spencer Recovery Facility, which is really serving as a bedroom on a, on a rental basis of Narcanon and of possibly sober living and of, of other people. That would have to, if they're licensed permanently to Narcanon, then, then that would become part of a Narcanon facility. In other words, it would now become a multiple facility. Now, the latter, the last thing is, is the six and over, any facility that has six or over in any of its locations, which it has to, and it's when you're doing your programs. It could be a six or under and have programs, but that would be a licensed facility because it's doing programs. That, that particular thing, that is now known. In other words, we can have distance requirements between these things. We can, you can have zoning on it. So, so you can have this, this no clustering rules. And, and, and it makes sense. And that's sort of a second explanation of what I think you're trying to get to. But what I was having trouble with is the rule that we were proposing said anything six or under, whether it has programs or not programs, including sober living facilities, are all the same and we're, they're all exempt from us. And that's not true. And if we get out of that and just consider only sober living facilities are exempt, and there are no such things. These are people that are living together accidentally almost and have no, get no funds from any outside source and are, and are tied to no programs.
Dick.
And, and it's not there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin, isn't, isn't that the point of what you were trying to get at with your change?
Is it? Okay. Okay, anyone else like to comment on this agenda item? Jim, are you coming or going?
No, I was just telling Dick a job.
Okay, then I will close the public comment. I'll bring you back to council for discussion.
There I go again. I, it does seem to be an issue as far as the ownership, the common ownership. And if we can, that to me would be something to address, because I do agree, I mean, it's so easy to create new entities, I mean, to get around something like that. The main thing is the distancing. So if you feel like that change that you suggested, that wording change would help there, I think that's a, something that we might want to recommend.
Are you referring to, I have two, two suggested changes, unless the facility is located within, and then that would be within 1,000 feet of another facility. Because of the basis of, of this, that might be something that Senator Harmon might consider. And then of another facility that is owned or operated by the same person or entity, or provide services that are integral or shared components of the service provided by, and it would have to say another facility.
Can I interject there, Robin? I don't mean to debate, but I think writing in 1,000 feet, actually, I liked your suggestion because it could apply to any facility in our jurisdiction, I thought, if you don't cite the number. Where if you put in 1,000, I think the bill's going to die.
Well, and-
Because people are going to point to that.
And, and that would be another way to look at it. If we, if we suggested that it would be unless the facility is located, it, no, unless the facility is owned or operated by the same person or entity, or provides services that are integral or shared components of the services provided by another facility.
In this, in the jurisdiction, I, I think that gets us citywide and is even better than identifying a number. So.
Because what we're doing, we're not, we're not putting a separation requirement. We are exempting from the independent six-or-under, the protections that are provided by that section. I don't know if the legislature would buy it, but it-
I think we should give that a try. I like that.
-would give a try.
Okay, any other comment?
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion, I guess, that we do, well, we should, we talked about Harmon's bill. Are we going to, what about Dutton's bill? Also has 1,000 feet there. Well, I, I too am wary of, of mucking around with a, a requirement with regard to the feet, although I know that Bob Rush, when he came up here, he talked about 1,000 feet in other jurisdictions, and that the, the case law was not on point, I guess, because there's not an exact same law. That may have been decided by another court. I think there are parallels that need to be taken into account. And I think that, and I, you know, I, I don't, I guess, agree that, I, I wouldn't call either of these bad laws. I guess maybe they're not exactly what we want. I mean, maybe we could, if we were writing it ourselves and passing it to seven members of the city council ourselves, we might do something a little bit differently. But we do have to deal with the realities of, of that these are other legis, or assemblymen and senators' bills, and that, you know, we, we do need to, I guess, respect their opinions as far as, you know, what they think that they can get through the legislature this period or this session. There's been a number of, of tries in the past that just don't get legs at all. And I, I'd sure hate to see that we spend all this effort this year and not get something through, even if it's not 100%. And so, I mean, there'll always be time to go back. So I would make a motion that we send a letter to Senator Harmon with the changes outlined by City Attorney Clausen with regard to changing that and to an or, and eliminating, or asking him to eliminate the language altogether with regard to the distancing requirement. Just saying that any two facilities basically operate in conjunction with, with each other in the same jurisdiction, not be allowed to have the six-or-fewer exemption as a residential use of property. As far as the Emerson bill, or Dutton bill, I'm sorry, I would just leave it as it stands.
I'll second your motion, and I appreciate all your leadership on this issue.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would, I, Steve, I think that's a great motion. And I, I, and I sympathize with, with Bob and Jim and the community on this issue and, and the problems that everybody faces day in and day out. But- But we can't let the, the perfect is the enemy of the good when we're trying to move forward here. We have both of our legislative orders engaged now with legislation, and we're moving this forward. We need to continue to do that, and I think we need to be appreciative of Senator Harmon and the Councilman DeWor for their efforts, work with them to get better bills. But let's move forward with what we have and get it done.
Anybody else? That's been Hen?
Yeah, and I think this has been a fruitful discussion, so I'm glad we had it, and that IROC did send us something here to talk about. And it seems to me we've got a good motion here, so.
Well, stay tuned. Hopefully, we'll have a lot more, but maybe not this late. Anybody else? All right, please vote, or was there a second? Leslie, you second it? Okay, please vote on the motion.
Motion carries.
See you all Thursday night. Okay, it's 10 after 12.
I'm not supposed to consider items after a lead?
No, I understand we have other items on the agenda, the LCP. Typically, once motions have come up after 12, or, I'm sorry, it's late. Agenda items come up after 12 o'clock, we do sort of poll the councils for whether they want to go forward or continue the item to our next meeting. Is there any feeling on this one way or another? Do we expect a lot of comment on it?
No, let's go for it.
Patrick, can you talk quick?
All right.
Really quick?
Yeah, all right, let's go for it. Losing my voice.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, I can forego the staff report, but I will need to point out a minor correction to the coastal land use map that's being distributed to you. We just had open space property at the northeast corner of Spear and Coast Highway that was incorrectly labeled. It shows as OS, it should be PR.
That's it?
That's it. Thank you.
Will we adopt the recommended action?
Well, he can make the... He looked too fresh, Leslie.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. I'm going to open up for public comment. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this matter? No one? Okay, seeing no one, bring it back. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me.
Yes.
Could I just ask a question? Page three of the staff report in discussing the Planning Commission action noted that the commission had recommended deleting a couple of the policies with regard to historic preservation. And staff noted that if the council chose, all of those policies could be eliminated because they don't deal with coastal resources, and they had not been in the originally certified coastal land use plan. So that's a choice for you.
So we should delete them then?
But they're not deleted from the general plan, just...
No, no.
Do I hear an amended motion?
So amended?
I'll agree to that if the mic or the motion will.
Sure.
Okay, so amended. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, motions for reconsideration. Madam Clerk?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Do I see any motions for reconsideration? See, if I would have voted for it, I could have made a motion for reconsideration, but I didn't. Okay, we're done with our agenda, but before we adjourn, recently, we had a death in our city family, and so I would like to take this opportunity to adjourn this meeting in memory of Kendall Jake Jacobson. Actually, I lost my notes here now. Well, I guess I'll have to wing it. In any event, Jake was a lifelong resident of Newport Beach. He was one of our lifeguards, and began working at the city here in 1959. He recently died at the age of 71. He was hired as an ocean lifeguard and began guarding the beaches that summer in 1959. Served two years in the Army, but as soon as his service was done, he did come back as a full-time lifeguard. Over the years, he's trained hundreds of ocean lifeguards. He was renowned and respected throughout the United States for his contributions to the lifeguarding occupation. He was instrumental in developing the United States Life Saving Association in 1964, which still thrives and exists today. Additionally, Chief Jacobson is the one who recognized the need for a junior lifeguard program in Newport Beach, which I might add is wildly popular, over 1,200 participants every summer. And was a key component in the creation of the program in 1984. Chief Jacobson and his wife, Marjorie, were married for over 47 years. He is survived by three children, and to note, two of them are lifeguards now, and one, Brent Jacobson, his son, is our, I guess, our chief lifeguard, lifeguard, battalion chief, I'm sorry. And his sister, Robin, also works as a seasonal lifeguard in the junior lifeguard program. And I believe Don also had some comments he wanted to make.
I, through my term at the city, had many instances to meet and talk with Jake, and he always had opinions on everything. And usually, they were very, very strong opinions. Nancy Skinner passed on some words that her husband, Dr. Jack Skinner, had, and wanted to make note that in the 1980s, Jake played a major role in forming Project Wipeout. This was a cooperative effort between the Newport Beach Lifeguards and Hoke Hospital to educate beachgoers about preventing serious neck injuries while swimming or surfing in the coastal waters. His son, Brent, was, is also currently involved in this effort and is one of our lifeguards. But this kind of grew into the junior lifeguard program, and so that I think that Jake will be missed, and my regards go to the family.
Thank you. We are adjourned.